You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to meet. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville. Talking about my hometown Fayetteville.
Good evening. Of course, I'm not Mayor Nat Robertson. My name is Mitch Colvin, the Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Robertson and Councilmember Arp joined us by phone. And so I will be leading the meeting tonight. If we can have Dr. Johnny Hunter from Clifdale Community Church to come up. How you doing, Dr. Hunter?
Fine, thank you, brother.
If we could all rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge allegiance.
Feel free to join me in this prayer if you like. Almighty God, I bow my head and acknowledge you. I also acknowledge that we need you. These are elected officials who represent constituents with many interests. I pray that decisions made this night will benefit the citizens of the city of Fayetteville. When unity is required, let the council be unified. When there are disagreements, let there be no contempt for one another after the vote. Bless the mayor, the city council members, and their staff. Let the citizens be safer, healthier, and financially improved. And in the immediate future, if hate tries to divide, let it be dissolved and issues resolved by love as light disperses darkness. Let the youth of this city be equipped academically, socially, politically, and spiritually so the future of this city be grand. In Jesus's name, amen. Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Hunter. I know we've seen you before. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself and your church?
Oh, certainly. I'll just be brief though. With Clifdale Community Church, literally our city's set on the hill. We're at 7763 Clifdale Road. And I get to be the pastor worship, and of course, the senior pastor is Morris Barnett, who's on vacation. So I get to run the church for a month or so. And it's still going to be standing when he gets back.
Yes, sir.
But at the same time, we have a wonderful time, and we have a high-power praise team. And it's a mixed congregation. And we love every folk. And the service at 10 o'clock, anybody can always feel free to join us. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Hunter, for that. Council item 4.0's announcements and recognition. We have Miss Teen North Carolina International, Ms. Caroline Hodges. She's present? Welcome, Ms. Hodges.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Caroline Hodges, and I am your current Miss Teen North Carolina International. I attained this title in April, and as my community service platform, I chose heart disease awareness and prevention. I chose this because my mentor had a heart attack, and it was a series of heart attack -- well, a heart attack that she didn't understand. And as a woman, I found it very heartbreaking that we didn't understand the symptoms of this disease. We didn't understand how it could affect us. We didn't know how prevalent it was. And then my aunt had quadruple bypass surgery, again because she had an unhealthy heart. And then my doctor -- or my dad, who is a cardiologist, had his own heart attack. So it's very personal to my heart, and I'd love to tell more about it, along with anybody in the community of Fayetteville. And so I just wanted to come and introduce myself to you all and tell you that I am willing to serve Fayetteville since it is my hometown, and I'd be happy to be anywhere and anytime.
All right. Well, congratulations. Council moving right along. Have a special guest from our youth council. Would you like to give us your name, sir?
Yes, sir. Did you want me to tell you a little bit about myself as well?
Absolutely.
Jordan, you want me -- I'll introduce you, and then you can tell a little bit about yourself, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Jordan Claiborne. Jordan Claiborne is a rising senior at Pine Forest High School. He is also the -- he was the junior class president and is now the senior class president for Pine Forest High School. He started the youth council in 10th grade, when you first could come in, and he was in the youth development program for the city. When did you start that, Jordan? 7th or 8th grade year. And he came in his 9th grade year, and he volunteered at the meetings doing check-in. So he was really wanting to be part of it. And Jordan, before you start, I'm going to brag on you a little bit. Jordan has become a national member of the League of Municipalities Youth Council. And he went -- when we went to Washington in November, he got to sit on a panel with how many of y'all are there? 12, maybe?
There's about 20 adults.
Okay, 20 adults and 40 members. And Jordan, I think you're the first one from North Carolina that has ever been picked for to be on the National League of Municipalities for their youth council. So I'm going to let Jordan tell you a little bit about himself then. I had to brag on him.[681.62][681.62](APPLAUSE).
Well, she pretty much knows everything about me. We're pretty close. She said everything, and I'm pretty sure you wanted to hear from her voice and not mine. But I guess I'll just move to what Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council is doing. Something that we're definitely pushing for is our Fayetteville Cumberland Glow Fest, so definitely come to that. And then after that, I want to strongly advocate for social and economic mobility.
Thank you, sir. Right, well, thank you for joining us. Glad to have you tonight. And I challenge my former -- my high school. I haven't seen any youth council representatives from E. Smith, so we're looking forward to that. Moving right along, Mr. Al Flores and Latinos United for Progress Entrepreneur Workshop. I think Mr. Devier had some communications with this organization. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Al Flores. I'm representing Latinos United for Progress. And I'm here to tell you a little bit about the last workshop that we just had and the impact that it's having on our community. Our organization, we have a mission to advocate for the progress and well-being of the Latino community through programs and projects that promote education, leadership, development, and cooperation among our diverse Latino population. We have a vision to be a meeting point and connection in the community, facilitating the tools that generate a positive economic and social impact in Cumberland County and its surroundings. The workshop itself, it's a series of seven seminars provided in seven different Saturdays. It's eight hours each. We have 33 students that came to this. The seminars target Latino business-minded individuals that need cultural competence to understand how to navigate in the U.S. business sector and how it operates, as it's different than what it is in our native communities. The seminars, like I said, is provided in seven parts, each of eight hours each. The topics include entrepreneurship overview, development and revenue models, strategic planning, internal and external finances, customer relationship management, marketing plans, and business plans. Each model is presented by experienced and successful local business owners who are Hispanic and Latino themselves. Latinos United is a member and partner of the Greater Fayetteville Chamber, and the chamber has aided Latinos United with marketing and with the sponsorship of their conference rooms. Our last class, we had 33 participants, 25 of which completed the entire course. Out of those 25, we had 12 that successfully began operating a business. Out of these 12, nine are currently operating businesses in Cumberland County. Seven of these are in Fayetteville. The remaining are operating in Wake County, the city of Greensboro, Spring Lake, and Hope Mills. Some of the examples of the businesses are heating and cooling services, real estate, accounting services, bakers, and cleaning services. Our graduation was April 29, 2017, and thanks to the impact that we had, that created at the state level, we were delighted to have the attendance of the Governor's Cooper's Deputy Director of Public Engagement, Ms. Matti Lasso. And we currently have a demand of 22 pre-registered members for our July class, which is to start on July 22. Our current budget is $5,000, which is for materials, licenses, network, launches, marketing, and instructoring fees. Thank you so much, and I welcome any of your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Congratulations on -- and thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Counsel at this time, as we finalize the announcements, we're going to ask that Mr. Rob Stone come up and brief us on status of Hurricane Matthew recovery. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Members of council, just talk one thing we want to just give you an update on is our dam, the current policy we have or the current work we've been doing on the dams. Right now, we've been working with Mr. Kevin Arata in the Corporate Communications Office to do some community meetings to discuss all the options. On July 25, here at City Hall, we're at 6 o'clock, we're going to discuss the Meere Lake Dam. And also, at 7:30, we're looking at discussing Devonwood. So that's July 25 here at City Hall. Then on July 27, here at City Hall, again at 6 o'clock, all the private dams that were damaged, such as Strickland Bridge Road Dam, Locklawn Gables, those dams, we'll have a meeting here to discuss the options for community for those. And again, that's July 27 at 6 o'clock here at City Hall. And then on August 1, at the Lake Rim Recreation Center, at 6 o'clock, we'll be discussing the Aaron Lakes Dam. And then at 7:30, the Rayconda Dam. So all that should be going out in a press release in the morning. Corporate Communications, we're just finalizing that right now, so just make sure updates. From there, we'll give everybody schedules and what the community's able to do.
Thank you, Ms. Stone.
Right, thank you.
Appreciate the hard work you're doing, you and the staff. At this time, we're going to ask the Assistant City Manager, Mr. Reinstein, to come forth, and the members of Golden Leaf. I'll meet you at the podium. Mr. Reinstein has some money for us.
No, Mr. Gerlach has some money for us. So I'm going to let Dan say a few words first, and then I'm going to make a few comments. Mr. Gerlach?
Mayor Pro Tem, Colvin, members of council, my name is Dan Gerlach. I have the honor of serving as the President of the Golden Leaf Foundation headquartered in Rocky Mountain, the tributary of Stony Creek, which is a major tributary of the Tar River. Until you find yourself in the middle of Stony Creek after Hurricane Matthew, as we did. So we have great familiarity with eastern North Carolina, and for that reason, the General Assembly asked us in December to administer monies, part of the $200 million to General Assembly appropriated, to help start the recovery from Hurricane Matthew here in eastern North Carolina. We were given $20 million to administer for grants to help local governments repair and replace infrastructure, sometimes to build new infrastructure out to new subdivisions to help with this recovery. We have now exhausted all that money, signing it to communities throughout the east, including Fayetteville. We have awarded our Board of Directors, since the time of our award in the last two meetings, has awarded over $3 million in grants to Fayetteville for four purposes, well, three purposes. One is to clean out Cross Creek and also some of the other major creeks that have gotten clogged with debris. To provide a road of some substance to the Rayconda subdivision that was mentioned earlier, and to deal with the Spruce Street drainage problems. These are indicative of the kind of problems that faced eastern North Carolina. We are pleased that my colleague, Casey Ginsburg, who previously served Governor McCrory's administration, and helped put together this Hurricane Matthew recovery package, and are pleased to be here tonight to honor the work you did and help us come back, help your citizens recover quickly. So we're just dispersing the money as quickly as possible into where our heart is, which is eastern North Carolina. So I have this ceremonial check to present today in the amount of $3,87,362.50. That is humbling and not necessary, because we're simply doing -- the General Assembly and your legislative delegation was very strong in saying that your job, Golden Leaf, is to get this money out to the people who need it as quickly as possible. And the General Assembly, and we are grateful for the support of this council, in writing a letter to the General Assembly, because there is more work to be done, and we are ready and willing to do it. And we have asked for some flexibility in language, and I believe within the next week, the General Assembly will enact additional assistance, because I know that you have more projects to do. Now, we couldn't give you $3,87,363. Couldn't just round it up, apparently, because, you know, we didn't want to be efficient, and we didn't want to cut you out of your 50 cents either. So if I could present this check, Mayor Pro Tem, Colvin, you're going to receive it from me, and we'll get our picture made, and don't try to cash this, we'll send you a real check.
Aw, man.[1208.16][1208.16](LAUGHTER).
Thank you. We'd look over this. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, sir.[1213.16][1213.16](APPLAUSE).
Yeah, thank you. And if that wasn't enough, we're actually working on another proposal, which we hope to get in by early July. We're waiting to hear back from the General Assembly to learn more about the flexibility of these dollars. But we are going to be submitting another grant for Beaver Creek Tributaries, Little Cross Creek. Some of those subdivisions affected by these tributaries are Chestnut Hills, Hollywood Heights, Beaver Run, Clifdale West, and Washington Drive. We listened to city council, and we are very hopeful that we will get to move forward with that. But I will say, this wouldn't have happened without our great staff, and I have to recognize some folks that have really been working extremely hard to get all of this information in and for us to be successfully able to receive these dollars. Jerry Dietzen, if Jerry Dietzen can come up as our project manager. Project manager extraordinaire, he's done an incredible job. I also want to get Rob's team. It's Rob Stone, Giselle Rodriguez, and John Larch. These projects, for the most part, fall under E and I, and without their hard work, we would not have gotten to this point. So again, let's hear it for all of them. Thank you. And then finally, I want to thank Casey Ginsburg. Casey, if you wouldn't mind at least standing up here. Casey has been an excellent person to work with. Not only is she responsive, but she's incredibly knowledgeable, and she really has helped us along the way so that we have been able to be successful and be able to obtain these dollars. So again, Casey, special thanks, and to Dan and to everyone. So we're going to be looking for more money, and we'll be updating you soon.[1322.54][1322.54](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Reinstein, I think you forgot an important piece. We need to acknowledge Mr. Reinstein for his hard works and efforts in bringing home the resources to Fayetteville and helping us recover.
Right. Right. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I just wanted to say personally to Mr. Reinstein, in the areas of Hollywood Heights and Chestnut Hills and other areas that was hit very hard, that this needed money will make a great difference in the lives of those residents that has been hit by Matthews and other areas. So thank you personally for your hard work in this area and obtaining this money. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it all.
Absolutely. Thanks. Counselors, we move to item 5.0, the approval of the agenda. I'm going to turn to Mr. Devier for a motion, I think, and amendment to proclamation. Okay, Mr. Hurst?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Colvin. It gives me indeed the privilege and opportunity to present a proclamation on something near to my heart, and that's garbage. As chairman of Fayetteville Beautiful since 2006, we have worked closely with two departments of the city of Fayetteville. One is Parks and Recreation, and the second is Environmental Services. So it's good to see my good friend Jerry Dietzen back doing his role here for the city. But I'd like to present this proclamation. Whereas, and those that are here, Ms. Jackie Tuckey, if you'll have them stand up and come forward. These are members of Environmental Services. We thank them for their service. If you visited FayettevilleNC.gov, you'll see the picture of all of the men and women, a great big picture of the men and women that serve the city of Fayetteville daily. And thank you, Councilmember Jensen. She has the actual proclamation there, which I'm honored to read. Whereas June 17 has been designated as National Garbage Man Day to recognize garbage workers nationwide and to celebrate trash collectors, dumpster haulers, sewage workers, street cleaners, and anyone who does dirty jobs we would rather not do ourselves. And whereas the day raises awareness for garbage men and women that make our cities and homes livable. And whereas garbage workers provide a service that prevents diseases and keeps our neighborhoods safe and sanitary. And whereas garbage workers provide a highly valued service for the community, like a police officer, firefighter, or any other public servant. And whereas garbage workers are generally underappreciated and deserve respect and appreciation for the hard work they do each and every day to make our city a clean place to live. Now, therefore, I, Nat Robertson, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of June 17, 2017, to be Garbage Man Day in our city, and encourage citizens to thank solid waste and garbage crews for all the sanitation services they provide to make Fayetteville a clean city. Nat Robertson, Mayor. And y'all do it early in the morning. Thank you so much for your services. We appreciate it very much.[1547.12][1547.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Councilmember Hurst. And we do have an awesome Environmental Services Department, I have to say that. Item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda with a slight modification. Mr. Devier?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I'd like to ask for approval of the presented agenda with an addition of item 8.04, which is a public hearing for economic development for the E. Clerks Project. This was previously advertised as a public hearing, so we want to give that opportunity to citizens to speak tonight. So I'd ask for approval of this motion.
Sure. It's a motion by Councilmember Devier, seconded by Councilmember Chris. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, counsel, will take your vote.
Green. Green.
Green by both Mayor Robertson and Councilmember Arp. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Those present and by phone. Item 6.0 is the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent items?
So move.
I think there's the approval of all but one particular item, 6.015. Is that what was discussed?
Yes, sir. 6.08.
Any other items wanted to take separate discussions or votes on, counsel? So do we have a motion to approve the consent items with the exception of item 6.08?
Yes, sir. I made that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wright is our second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chris. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, counsel, vote. Mayor Robertson and Councilmember Arp?
Green. Green.
All greens. Madam Clerk, is she unanimous? Present and by phone. Item 6.08, Mr. Chris, was that you? Or Mr. Devier?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I just wanted to get staff to, maybe Mr. Kristoff could give us some clarity on this contract. Had a couple of questions on it as far as the bid, what it entailed, as well as local Or we can, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, we could move it back to a work session if it's not going to hinder staff operations.
Certainly available to answer any questions we've asked. Actually, I just called Sergeant, or sorry, Captain Urion over as well. He was the one who put together the package. If he has a question, if there's a question I can't answer, I'm sure he'll be able to answer it as well. But if you have a question, I'll do my best.
Well, I think first for the viewing audience, if you could give us a little bit of background on what this is, what the contract is that we're looking to award, that you're asking us to award tonight, and a little bit of background on that to start off with, and then we probably have a couple of questions.
Sure. What we're looking to do is actually, we've done an request for proposal for security services to provide security not only for City Hall, but other businesses, other city offices, including the new multimodal center, which will open in August. And that was really the thing that actually brought this forward, was getting the additional security for that facility. So we're looking for security personnel to provide security for that center, for City Hall, and also for some of our other offices in the downtown area, including the Festival Park Plaza. So we put together a scope of work that we then issued out in advertisement and looked for -- advertisement and looked for proposals from security firms in the area.
Mr. Bauer, I had a question. The council has made it clear that local, and there are participation goals in all that we do. Were any local bids received for this particular RFP?
No, we only received two responses and neither one was local.
And typically when the participation or when the responses are not at a certain level, there's some discretion made with rebidding that. Was that a consideration in this case?
Again, this wasn't a formal bid process. It was a request for proposal. So the limitation that you're talking about, which is in statute regarding works for bid, doesn't apply in this case. So we didn't go back out on a second time.
RFP requests for proposals. How's that different? Explain what you mean.
It's different from a formal bid, like a construction bid or something like that. This is a service contract. So it's not, doesn't, that statute doesn't apply.
And you still have the option to reject and rebid if it doesn't meet council's interest. So Councilmember Devier, I'm interested to know what procedure was followed. If you wanna send us back to a work session, are there any time restrictions?
Yes, sir. What I'd like to recommend is that we, is there another, do you have any other comments, Mr. Kristoff?
I do. Of course, part of this contract is for the multimodal center. That will be supported by federal funds. So we cannot have a specific local preference and still utilize federal grant funds.
Thank you for that background. I guess what I'd recommend to council, if it's the council's will, is that we relook this, we ask staff to go back and relook this, how we can look at other local options, or how we can get local participation based on the level of this service contract, and bring it back to us in August so it doesn't hinder the multimodal center operations.
Is that a motion, Mr. Devier?
Yes, sir. I'd offer it up as a motion.
So you have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Devier. Is there a second? There is a second. Second by Councilmember Chris. Any discussion on the motion? See some lights.
Sir, if I could, I apologize. I just wanna make it clear that when we award a new contract, that new contractor's gonna need some time to get on board. We do hope to open up the multimodal center with security in August. If we're coming to you in August and we wouldn't be able to award this till August 14th, I'm afraid we would not have the security in place at that time.
Okay, we have a couple of lights. Mr. McDougall and then Councilmember Wright.
Yeah, I think consideration needs to be made for those that did make an effort to apply. And I understand what you're saying. But if it's put out there for a time period and then people don't respond, I say people, businesses, and you know, they don't respond. I'd like to do local too, but we gotta be fair to those that respond to the request when we put it out there. And it's like coming to a meeting that starts at seven and you show up at eight and we wait till you get there before we start the meeting. We dishonor those that were there on time. So yeah, I would like to do local too. And maybe next year or maybe some other year, they may wanna bid. But they had an opportunity already. And for some reason or another, they chose not to do that. And I think it would be unfair to those that did the work to do whatever it is that they did to make this proposal happen. So I would have to vote against the proposal not to move forward.
Thank you. Mr. McDougall, Councilmember Wright?
Yeah, I just have one question. These are security guards. A lot of times you have security guards that guard facilities without arms. Will they be armed? Will they have firearms?
They will not be armed, sir. They will not have guns.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? So, Mr. Bauer, I did have a question. So you stated basically that they will not be armed guards. Will they have any police power or is just basically to call 911 in the event there's an issue? What authority would they have?
They will not have police power. They would just call us.
All right. Well, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion, Mr. Devier?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Protem, I have a question, please.
Councilmember Art? Yes, sir.
Yeah, so what is the advantage of having a security guard that has no authority? I mean, what's the purpose of paying these folks to be there when they don't have any authority to take action? Anything they're gonna have to do, they're gonna have to dial 911.
Well, they do have authority to take action, same as anybody else. Police authority is based off of the Constitution. We don't really have any more authority than anybody else other than to actually take people to jail.
Forgive me, who's speaking?
This is Captain Urine with the Police Department.
Yeah, could you, could you move to the mic a little bit for me?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me better?
Yes, sir, thank you. And what authority do they have?
They have the same authority as everybody else. If an emergency arises, they can take action. A lot of that is based on discussions between what you all would want them to do and what their company policy is.
Yeah, but I'm gonna ask the question again. What authority do they have?
I'm trying to figure out how to answer that question. They have the same authority under North Carolina general statute as the police do. They have the same right to take action if an emergency arises, same as every other citizen in the state of North Carolina. Now, as far as arresting people and taking them to jail, that is our job. That's what the police do. You asked a question, what are the advantages were to have security there. The biggest advantage is cost saving. If you feel that you need armed security, then what you need is additional police officers. That's my opinion. We discussed that at great lengths. And we felt that based on the amount of calls for service in the area where the multimodal building was going up, that it did not warrant armed security. And therefore, there was no need for police to be involved over there on a full-time basis or here at City Hall.
Thank you, sir. I think we have a couple more lights. Mr. McDougall and then Mr. Devier.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I was just trying to help Jim to understand that I think it's important to have the presence of uniform. And you know, there's just something about it that helps people to be a little more orderly. And also, they have the authority to tell them to simply move on or to watch your voice or to watch your movements. It's just important to have that sort of other eye. And people know that the presence of that uniform, it just does something. So I think that's important to have then.
They have the authority to speak for you, as far as what you want, what City Council wants or what's the government wants.
Yeah, I was at the Westover Pool this weekend. And in fact, a group of people were kinda harassing another couple of people. And it took somebody that had that position of authority to come to tell them. As a matter of fact, they went and sought the persons to come and to get people to move along and to stop harassing. And sometimes just the president of knowing somebody is there with that authority to do that, that can make that call, make that quick call. It does a lot to warrant, to keep the position, I mean, the presence of, you know, bad activity down. I don't know, did you hear me, Jim? All right. Oh, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman McDougall. We have Councilmember Wright?
Yes, the reason I asked that initial question, whether they were armed or not, was to bring this conversation about what authority does these guards have. And also, I agree with Councilman McDougall. It's the image that you would have there as an authority. I agree, we do need to have that. There was some discussion earlier about the concerns about loitering in the bus station, in the mobile station, and whether people will feel safe. We know the down-on-person street, we have a lot of law and that kinda thing. We got a brand-new mobile center. So we need that, you know, that type of security around. But my next question would be, what is the cost of this agency to have security guards there? And you said they will be other places as well? They'll be stationed in other facilities?
Same company will also be here in City Hall. And depending on the growth of the city, wherever you may want them.
Okay.
I heard a rumor that we bought a baseball stadium. I don't know what the security plans are for that.
Is that a rumor?
Again, if you wanted to extend that security to that location, you could do that as well.
Total cost of the proposed contract is $250,000.
A year?
A year. With some opportunity for additional hours should we need him?
And how many guards would that hire?
It's gonna be one 24 hours a day at the multimodal center. It will be one, I don't know the exact hours that we were talking about there, but there's gonna be another guard over there when city transit is there.
So it's one guard, there's only one guard there at a particular time?
It's gonna be one guard there at least 24 hours a day.
Captain, can you make sure your mic is on? I have those on the phone that can't hear. So I don't know if our audio people need to do something.
If he lifted up to his mouth.
Got feedback, but okay, if you could speak into the mic. Yes, sir.
There's gonna be at least one security guard there 24 hours a day. There will be an additional security guard there when transit, Greyhound is gonna be open. There will be a full-time guard here at City Hall during its normal hours of operation. And there will also be a roaming guard when needed. That was the original plan when we first set it up.
All right. So Councilmember Devier?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of questions, or one question and then a comment. What term of this contract? It's a three-year contract, correct? So is it a one-year with two renewable or three-year initial contract?
Three years with two one-year auctions.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, my concern on this is just, and I know it might hinder the operation, but it's just about building our local capacity. When we look at, this isn't a specialized operation like some of the things we've seen in Parks and Recreation. And some of the bids we've agreed to with Parks and Recreation is not specialized. I can't believe that in a military town that we couldn't find a security company that could do what we're asking to do. So I have just concerns about the capacity and how we do that and how we're advertising it and how we're getting the edge, how we're getting the awareness out to our local community. I don't want it to hinder the multimodal operations, but I think this is one that we can, we definitely need to take a hard look at.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor Protem, you know, this is not a discussion that's just come up. It's been going on for a couple of years or more, ever since the, you know, I've been on council three and a half years. And this discussion about security at the multimodal center has been going on. And in fact, you know, I sit on the, on the team with those that, and it's even going on with them, it's been going on all the time. Now, I recognize Councilman Devier has, well, he's been a year and a half now. He should have heard some of this already. But it's been going on. It's not new. We've looked at the Sheriff's Department, the City Police Department, private vendors. So all of this has been going on. And it's just not new. And so we've made all this examination and this is where we are now at this point. And this is the best option that we've been able to come up with at this point. Now, it may have to change after the first year or so, if we see that where we need to make a change. But we've examined almost every option that we had.
Okay. Counsel, any further discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Is this contract consistent with the Greyhound contract?
Yes, it is, sir. It does meet our obligations. And Greyhound will be contributing to the cost of this contract.
At, to what point, Mr. Bauer?
They'll be covering the security that's there whenever we're not in operation. That's a part of their obligation for cost sharing under their lease agreement.
And 9% of the other portion that goes on during the, so it's 100%?
100% when the city's not in operation. And then a percentage based on square footage when we are in operation.
Okay. And I didn't see in the council packet where it mentioned 24-hour security, but you're saying that the new multimodal center will be covered 24 hours a day by this new company?
Yeah, it was in there, Mayor.
The 24-hour piece?
Yeah.
I didn't see that.
I read it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, any further discussions on the motion? If not, let's vote to, Mr. Devier, it's been a lot of discussion. Can you restate the motion, please, sir?
Yes, sir. I move to table this, table this item so that we can, or refer it back to a work session in August so that we can get further clarification on the contract and look at our options for local contractors.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, that's the motion on the floor. Take your votes. Mr. Mayor and Art?
Red.
Red. Looks like voting. We got too many, we got too many numbers. Kathy's over here voting for me. She hit mine and hers, so we'll discount mine. So it's five-five, so the motion fails. Voting in favor of the motion was Councilmember Chris, Devier, Wright, Robertson, and myself. That was your vote for me, Kathy? No, I'm voting for the mayor. I'm sorry. All right, we're in different seats tonight, so bear with us. Okay, so voting in favor of the motion was Chris, Devier?
Mayor Protem.
Ma'am.
Perhaps you should clear the board.
Let's do that. Kathy, stop voting for me. All right, counsel, we'll see, we'll see your votes. All right, so it's still five to five. And Mr. Mayor and Art?
Red, red.
Red, red. All right, so voting, so voting in favor, Mr. Turner, you have something to add?
While she's thinking of that, I would motion that we move to the previous motion that's on our agenda to approve the contract for the private security services as listed on our.
All right, let me, let me read the.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, so.
You're a good man.
Previous motion, Ms. Clerk, you have that? It's five-five. All right. So we have a motion, a new motion on the floor. Councilmember McDougall, seconded by Councilmember Devier to approve the contract as presented. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Green. Green.
Wow, this council gets along. So that's unanimous. Good job. All right. Healthy discussion. Moving along to item 7.0 is the public hearing. Individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00 PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated. In which case, the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, you have 30 seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. Staff person will present the item. I open this public hearing, Madam Clerk. Please call the first speaker.
I think Mr. Harmon will present.
Mr. Harmon, you're the first speaker.
Well, if you don't mind, I'll just kinda go through the case for everybody before we have the first speakers come up. First case you have before you is a rezoning request from Single Family 10 to either a community commercial or limited commercial zoning district for property located at 1428, 1432, and 1436 Pamalee Drive, which is near the intersection of Pamalee and Kane Roads. Give you an idea of where the property is located. Right here is that intersection of Kane and Pamalee. And this is three undeveloped properties just to the west. As you can see on the zoning map, there are kind of a cluster of neighborhood commercial and office uses, zoning districts right around the intersection. And they do spread west as far as on the south side to bump up against the properties in question. And then to right here on the north side. The current land use in the area is mainly single-family residential through that area of Pamalee. Our land use plan calls for this area to remain single-family residential. And then this is just a map showing you a little broader area that kinda connects you that the area we're talking about here, all the way out here to you really get to the intersection with Blanton Road before you have another cluster. the intersection with Blanton Road before you have, uh, another cluster of commercial activity. So this is kind of, uh, a stretch, uh, that's left along Pamley that's predominantly single-family and multifamily. Uh, just a couple of photos of the property. This is the property in question. This is looking back toward Kane Road. And then this is looking, uh, in the west towards Skybo Road. Uh, May ninth, the zoning commission did hold a public hearing regarding this case. Uh, there was one speaker in favor and one in opposition. The commission voted three to two to recommend, to deny the rezoning. Uh, and this is coming to, on appeal, uh, from the owner. Uh, as I mentioned, the zoning commission and staff recommend denial. Uh, the property has residential development already built on three sides. Uh, city's land use plan calls for low-density residential on the property. Uh, and currently, these properties are zoned for that type of use. Uh, the rezoning to Elsie or CC could be considered a spot zoning since there is no other commercial, uh, there is office use, uh, in that area, but no more commercial use. Uh, and the denial of this request, uh, helps, uh, maintain that residential section of Pamley that I just showed you. Um, any questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
See, no questions.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, we have two speakers for this item. The first item, uh, the first speaker is Ms. Arnell Bobbitt.
Welcome, Ms. Bobbitt. Can you state your name and address?
Arnell Bobbitt. I live at three hundred Trinity Garden Lane in Linden, North Carolina. And I'd like to say thank you for allowing me to speak on my behalf concerning the property on Pamley Drive. Uh, what I'd like to say is, although it was mentioned that the land in the area is not commercial, there is a gas station, there is a, a Dollar General, an office space next door to the particular property. There's a daycare. The, the area is quite mixed use. And I'm requesting, if you would allow me, a conditional use. I would like to use the property to display and to advertise old Hickory buildings as well as sell three, three-seasoned decks and indoor porches for homes. I also have a real estate company and I purchased the land on Pamley Drive because it has about thirty thousand or more, um, cars and traffic. And if I'm not really speaking really well, I'm not used to this, so forgive me. But the land is in an area that has a lot of res, a lot of traffic and it's far from residential. I know that there is a house to the left of me and the gentleman asked me if he could use my land to get an exact type of storage shed onto his property. And there are just so many other uses of that area that aren't residential. A friend of mine built homes right across the street, spent thousands of dollars, tried to sell them. And he ended up having to rent them because no one wants to live on a five-lane intersection. And Pamley Drive's Skybo and Country Club is a five-lane intersection which passes through the main heart of Fayetteville. So I don't see it, see it being a residential area. I'd just like to make use of the lots that I purchased there and make a living for myself. I do not want to have a nightclub or a tattoo bar if it needs to be restricted so that I won't be able to utilize it for those purposes. I have no, no desire to use it for anything other than, um, business district. And as a matter of fact, there's an item, it says office use, business services, and sales and including sales in real estate, which is office use in that area as well. So, I'm not sure what else to say. I, I had a lot of things written down, but again, if there were things that would be contrary to what the city wants the direction for that neighborhood to be, taken off from commercial CC or Elsie, I don't have a problem with it not, if I sell it to be sold to someone who wants to do something that would be, would, would not be what the city would have it to be. I just wanna utilize it.
Thank you, Ms. Bobbitt. Madam Clerk, any, any further speakers?
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Kristen Roller.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Roller. I reside at fourteen thirteen Valencia Drive. And it is shown in the zoning circle and therefore we were asked, um, if we wanted to be a part of this tonight. My, um, my family, five generations of my family has lived in the Fayetteville area for, um, approximately sixty-six years. And this, my property where I live now has been in my family for forty-four years and I have lived there since two thousand and one. Additionally, I have other family that rents property down on Valencia Court, which would be also almost adjacent to this property. Over time, there's been modest change to our area, but has retained a quiet residential feel. I do understand these particular properties do face a busy road, but the overall area is a residential area. There is currently limited commercial use nearby at the intersection at Kane Road and the two homes directly east of this adjacent property in question. And to the west, other than three churches, it remains residential for almost a half a mile. And at that point is where you will reach a lot where a gas station has closed down and a side road minced meal that has offices there. Three tenths of a mile further is where you actually get to Blanton Road and that is where the bulk of our commercial use on that road begins. In the map, in the circle that is shown here, eighty-six percent is residential of the lots that are in the circle or touching directly to the circle and ten percent commercial. Again, those are offices, a medical facility, um, within that section and four percent churches. For several years on my street, we had empty property sitting, but we finally in the last several months to year have sold the lots, the homes, and secured renters. And I would hate any new zoning done to this property to hurt the family feel that we've finally been able to continue to establish on our dead-end street and the surrounding communities. When I sat at the planning meeting, we listened to the idea of the owner that she wished to put sample storage sheds on the lot and it may sound good and that it would just be storage shed. But once you rezone it, it could be anything. And we have very high concerns about that. This is a high-traffic area, but adding commercial property with more traffic would just make this worse and more unsafe for the people in the area. Additionally, we live behind the property and just clearing the lots has created a drainage issue that runs down towards our property. We faced flooding with Hurricane Matthew. And I, um, shudder to think of what could happen if commercial property went in and did a lot of paving and converted it to less permeable land. This is my home and I hope the council will support the many long-term taxpayers who do live in this surrounding residential community by not allowing our neighborhood to be compromised with further commercial development directly next to residences. While I am sympathetic to the property owner's desire to do business, it was purchased as residential. And there are plenty of other areas on Pamley Drive closer towards Bragg Boulevard and Blanton Road or further down the other direction closer to Merkison Road that would not harm a residential community. I hope you will uphold the planning committee's vote of no.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Pro Tem, we have no further speakers.
This time we're gonna, gonna close the public hearing for this item. Uh, look to you, counsel, for action. Uh, Mr. Councilmember McDougal?
Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we deny this request based on the recommendations of the, um, planning commission, or zoning commission.
It's a motion by Councilmember McDougal to deny, uh, this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Devier. Uh, any, any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir. I've studied this fairly well. I've studied all the facts and all the pieces that go along with it. And, um, it is disturbing a residential neighborhood with the potential of a lot of commercial pieces. And, and also, this particular area is, is, um, speed limit forty-five fifty. There are a number of accidents. There's a guard rail up the road about a quarter of a mile that's, um, hit at least once a month. Um, as a matter of fact, um, uh, the residents in that area are always calling about that guard rail, getting it back up after it's been hit. Uh, we've had a number of complaints even in, um, right down the street from Valencia Court. Um, there is a problem there. As a matter of fact, there are officers in that area all the time about a lot of noise and a lot of other things that are going on. As a matter of fact, even myself, I have to, I visit in that area quite a bit. I understand your plight and understand what you're trying to do. It's just not in keeping with the, the character of that particular neighborhood. I too myself live in that area. It's, it's just not in keeping with the character of what, of what the neighborhood is.
Thank you, Councilmember McDougal. Uh, Councilmember Wright?
I might have a question for the staff. The young lady mentioned, um, that there was something in the zoning requirements that made her think that she could change the zoning. Is there something in this particular zoning area, um, that made her think that as far as the change of, of the zoning? Or is it something that's permanent and must remain residential? I know we got a denial from the committee, but, but is that something in there to make her think that?
No, I don't think so. Uh, I actually discouraged her several times along the way. It took, she went through a process of several months of deciding whether to apply or not. And, uh, at one time I thought she had come to the conclusion of not doing it. And then finally came in and said, you know, I wanna try my luck, try my luck at this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Any, any further discussion on the motion, uh, the McDougal, Devier motion? If not, counsel, we'll ask for your vote to deny.
Green.
Mr. Art?
Green.
Madam Clerk, that's unanimous from those present on the line for denial. Thank, thank you, Mr. Harmon. Open item seven point zero-two, special use permit. Mr. Harmon, long time no see.
Yes, absolutely. Good to see y'all again. Um, this is a special use permit request, so if we can get, uh, anyone who signed up to speak, uh, to come to Ms. Pam to.
We, we have no speakers for this item.
Okay.
Clerk, this time we're gonna announce that the public hearing is.
Well, I'll go ahead and do the presentation and then we can open and close the public hearing. It'll be fairly simple since there's no one here to speak on it. Um, this public hearing is on the issuing of a special use permit for two, uh, small cell antennas. Uh, one in an SF six, single-family district, the other in CC, community commercial. Uh, the properties are located at six hundred Carroll Street and thirty, uh, three thirty-nine, uh, Devers Roads. And these are near the intersections of Carroll and Bragg and Devers and, uh, and Access Road at Fayetteville Tech. Uh, and both of these are within, uh, the right-of-ways. And just to give you a, a small, very short background on these. Um, these small cell antennas, they're a new technology for cell companies. Uh, it's due to all the data that's now being transmitted, uh, through your phones and everything. And these are actually, uh, small, uh, you'll see some photos in a moment. They're about three feet tall and they basically sit on top of an existing or new power pole. Um, and so that's what we're looking at tonight are two of these. Uh, the first one, uh, there on Devers Street, uh, would be right here, right across from City Park. And right again, as I said, right at the access road to Fayetteville Tech. And just to give you an idea more, uh, it is, uh, land use plan calls for office and institutional there. This is what it will look like. Uh, this is the little thing on top of the pole. So it's not, not very intrusive. Um, this is it with the equipment. Uh, and of course, looking across the street toward the, uh, Ballp Fields. Uh, this is the second one. This is the one at Carroll and Bragg. Uh, there's an enterprise rental, uh, place right here, uh, just to give you an idea of where we're talking. Most of the stuff, as you know, right through that area is heavy commercial. That's what our land use plan calls for as well. Uh, it would be this pole in the middle that they would be, uh, fitting with the antenna. And that's basically what it would look like with the antenna and equipment on it. The conditions of approval, uh, the submitted site plans and diagrams that you have in your packet. Uh, the zoning commission did hold a public hearing regarding the case. Uh, there were no speakers in favor or opposition. The commission voted three to two to recommend approval. And I believe that that close vote was just based on the fact that no one showed up to speak in favor of the proposal. The zoning commission and staff, however, do recommend approval. Uh, the, the small cell antenna, antennas have a minimal, uh, visual impact on the surroundings. Uh, since the total height of the poles that are already there will only be three feet higher. As you can see, they're just a small, uh, antenna that sits on top. Uh, and that these would be located in, in both a commercial and in, in institutional zoning areas. Uh, and that this would meet our standards for an SUP for these. Are there any questions of staff before we open your public hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
Thank you.
This time we're gonna open and close the public hearing. Yeah, Ms., Madam Clerk, there are no speakers, correct?
No, sir, we have no speakers for this item.
Gonna open and, and close the public hearing. Uh, counsel, I'll look to you for item, for action. Uh, Mr. Councilmember McDougal?
Mayor Pro Tem, I make this real easy for us tonight. I, I, I move that we, uh, approve this request, uh, with the conditions that are listed. And if Mr. Harmon wants to throw them back on the screen, I read them. Otherwise, they're in the document.
I second that. Got a motion by Councilmember McDougal, second by Councilmember Wright. Any, uh, discussion on the motion? Counsel, all those in favor, we'll look for your vote.
Green.
Madam Clerk, that's unanimous, including the mayor and Councilmember Art. Thank you, Ms. McDougal. Mr. Harmon, you back again?
You're gonna see a lot of me this evening. Uh, the next case we have is, uh, P seventeen fourteen F. This is a request to rezone property from Single Family Ten to office and institutional. Property is located at Bingham Drive near the intersection of Bingham and Crestwood. Uh, give you an idea of where this is located. This is the property in question. Uh, just to, this is the subdivision, uh, just here, just a little ways up the road here on Bingham is where Old Bingham comes into New Bingham where the road was washed out during Hurricane Matthew. Just to get you in that general area. There, it is currently a vacant piece of property. Uh, most of our, our land use plan calls for low-density residential along that area and medium-density residential across the street. Uh, again, it is undeveloped currently. Uh, give you an idea of kinda up and down the street there. Uh, on the thirteenth of, uh, June, the zoning commission held a public hearing regarding this case. Uh, there were two speakers, one in favor and one neighbor who wasn't really in favor or opposition just wanted to come and find out what was going on. Uh, the, uh, commission voted four to one to recommend approval of the rezoning. Uh, staff, again, had recommended denial. Uh, the stat, reason for staff's denial was that, uh, in recent past years, the city council expressed a desire not to extend commercial, uh, development beyond the areas shown as commercial on the land use plan map. And, uh, as you see in your packet, uh, the. And, uh, as you see in your packet, uh, the city council, uh, a few years ago, actually turned down a couple of rezonings right in this same general area, uh, of Bingham Drive for commercial use. Uh, again, the city's land use plan calls for low density residential, uh, and currently that's what's on it plus around this property. Uh, rezoning could be considered a spot zoning. Uh, the zoning commission, however, did recommend approval and their recommendations were based on, uh, that the UDO calls for our O and I, uh, district to serve as a transitional use to residential development. Um, that the adjoining property to the south is a church, uh, and the, uh, and they cited the amount of traffic that's already, uh, being generated on Bingham Drive. Are there any questions of staff before you open your public hearing?
Don't see any lights, Mr. Harmon. So at this time, we open the public hearing. Uh, Madam Clerk, call the first speaker.
Mayor Protem, we just have one speaker for this item, Mr. Tarek Gade.
Tarek Gade, eleven four four six two Home Sticks Drive. Uh, this is my property. Um, the reason I'm trying to rezone this property, I'm trying to the medical center over there. You know, the V is too close to this property and, uh, I'm trying to do like a medical center over there. We have, have a like, uh, doctor, uh, would love to do some investment with me in this project over there. And, um, that's, uh, that's why I'm trying to rezone it to be medical center and do some offices and, um, that, that's all very much, uh, I'm trying to do with it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
We have no further speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Since there are no further speakers, we're going to close the public hearing for this item. Council will look to you for actions or questions of staff. Councilmember Chris, do I see a light?
Yes, sir. I move to deny the request for rezoning.
Have a motion by Councilmember Chris for denial of rezoning. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, yeah.
Oh, plenty second second. I think Councilmember McDougal was quick on the draw tonight. All right, so second by Councilmember McDougal, so the Chris. McDougal motion, any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir.
So I see lights of Councilmember Wright and then Chris.
Yeah, yeah, I just had a, um, a question for councilman, uh, Chris to explain, um, the, the reason for denial.
Well, we've, we've been down this road before in terms of, uh, rezoning from, uh, uh, single family dwellings along Bingham Drive. If you look to the top of the screen, just above that property, you see houses right there. And on the other end of that wooded area, you see houses all along there. Those are dwellings across the road from there. So, uh, in several, uh, two or three years ago, we also denied requests along this portion of Bingham Drive, uh, to change the context from single family. And that's the basis of my denial. I'm trying to be consistent here, uh, in this and protect the sanctity of these residential homes in that area.
Thank you, Councilmember Chris and Wright. I did have a question, uh, Mr. Harmon. I know you stated before that council basically is taking the recommendation of the land use plan and, and chose not to spot zone. What, what was the latest land use plan we had?
It is.
Is that the twenty-ten plan?
It is twenty-ten.
What year is it?
But, well, I, and I do realize it's a little past that, but this section, um, has had some updates, uh, because it's, uh, because of the widening and all through there. And actually, uh, right across the road here, where you see the, uh, little cluster of mobile homes here in this house, that was where, that was one of the places that got denied just a few years ago by city council for rezoning. Um, if you know that area just to the south, there's a fairly new, uh, shopping center with a really nice, uh, one of the new designed food lines, uh, at that. And then just south of there, uh, a half mi, probably less than a half mile is a, uh, a mixed use development that has commercial out front with apartments and, uh, single family as well. And so, uh, it was staff's thought that even though that land use plan is a twenty-ten plan, uh, we've got some new commercial development and trying not to undermine the new commercial that's, uh, really still in its infancy out there.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, any other discussion on the motion? Uh, the McDougal, Chris, Chris McDougal motion?
The question was, um, I just wanted to make a question that he just wanted, he wanted to put offices out there, um, medical offices, what?
I believe medical offices is what his current intention is.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? And the motion is to deny, my Councilmember Chris of council. Ask for your votes on the motion.
Green. Green.
Let's see, Madam Clerk, motion to deny carries with Chris DeVier, Colvin Robertson, Art and Councilmember Jensen, uh, voting against was Wright, Hurst, McDougal and Moon. McDougal, were you the second on that motion?
Vote against, Moon's second.
I do. Okay. All right, this makes, I had it right. All right. Mr. Harmon, popular guy tonight.
Yeah, I told you, you're going to get tired of seeing me this evening. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers signed up for this one? We need to get them sworn in if we do.
Uh, yes, sir, we just have one speaker, Mr. Leroy Gamble.
Yeah.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., uh, Ms. Chairman. Uh, the, this case is P seventeen fifteen F and it is the issuing of special use permit, uh, to allow assisted living, uh, family home, uh, in an SF six, single family district. Uh, the property is located at nineteen oh seven, uh, Harris Street, uh, near the intersection of Harris and Hood Roads. Uh, the aerial here is a little out of date, um, but I'm sure that most of you know where the new, uh, Family Dollar, uh, store is there on Murchison Road. Uh, it is this property right here. And so this property is almost directly behind that. Um, you'll see in the, uh, photos, uh, here in a moment, it's a former group home, so it is already set up, uh, to accommodate people with, uh, uh, different types of afflictions. Uh, again, current land use in the area is mainly single family, uh, back when you get to Harris Street and to the west. Uh, our land use plan calls for medium density residential through that area. Uh, this is basically what the property looks like. You can see they've got, uh, quite a bit of, uh, parking at the, at the facility, plus, uh, Harris is on street parking. Plus there's a, uh, right here on the side, this goes back to a little garage area in the back as well. And, uh, as I mentioned before, it's already set up for, uh, handicap accessibility. There's a, a ramp here in the front, uh, for access. As a special use permit, uh, staff and the zoning commission recommend a couple of conditions. Uh, one, that no more than six residents at any time, uh, stay here, uh, that, uh, they maintain the character of the neighborhood. It is a home that's being reused for this purpose, so it fits in well with what's already there. On June thirteenth, the zoning commission did hold a public hearing. Uh, there was one speaker in favor and one concerned that her tax bill may rise if this were approved. Uh, the commission voted five zero to recommend approval. Uh, staff and commission, uh, base their recommendation on, uh, the fact that the facility will have twenty-four hour onsite caregivers. Uh, the facility will be maintained as a home and not interfere with the character of the neighborhood. Uh, the applicant, uh, will limit the number of rev, residents to no more than six. And the city's land use plan calls for medium density residential, which fits in with this as well. Um, any questions of staff before you open your public hearing?
Don't see any lights, Mr. Harmon. Madam Clerk, can you call the first speaker?
Our first, uh, only speaker for this item is Mr. Leroy Gamble.
Mr. Gamble, how you do, sir?
Good, sir, how you doing? Leroy Gamble, live at eighteen eleven Armstrong Street. I have went around to this property and checked it out. I was going to vote, I, I want, I don't want it in there, but as much as I looked at it and understood the condition that what it's going to be used for, I hope you approve it. It would better the neighborhood and it would make that side of town a little graceful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Mr. Gamble.
No further speakers, sir.
No further speakers. Uh, so at this time, we'll close the public hearing for this item. And council, I'll look to you for action.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. McDougal?
We're having a lot of good company tonight, huh? Me and Mr. Harmon, you have. Uh, certainly I would move that we, uh, approve this with the two conditions that no more than six residents at any one time and that they maintain the character of the neighborhood.
So have a motion by Councilmember McDougal. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hurst? Hurst McDougal motion. Uh, discussion on the motion, I do want to say that, uh, for me with this, this area and I think this would be a positive. I know what the impacts would be with a vacant building this size and trying to maintain it for safety and, uh, for appearances. So, uh, I'm glad to hear that the neighbors are in, in, uh, in agreement with that. Councilmember Chris?
Uh, Councilmember McDougal, there was a third caveat and I thought that was, that they would have twenty-four hour caregiver. Is that?
On site.
On site, is that a part of your?
Uh, yes, sir, that, uh, I, I'll assess that a friendly amendment. Yes, sir.
Friendly amendment and a second.
Three stipulations, yes.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Chris. Any other discussion on the motion? Council will look to you for your votes. Mr. Mayor and Art?
Green. Green.
Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries. Mr. Harmon, item seven point zero five.
I believe this is our last opportunity of the evening, hopefully. The last case I have is P seventeen dash sixteen F and it's the issuing of a special use permit to allow automotive repair within a hundred feet of residential, uh, development in a limited commercial district. Uh, Madam Clerk, if we've got anyone who has signed up to speak, we need to get those sworn in.
Yes, sir, we have two speakers, uh, Mr. Jason Albert and Mr. Philip Joyner. Thank you. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, this property is located at fifty-three twenty-seven Rayford Road, uh, near the intersection of Rayford and Pompkin Roads. Uh, give you an idea here on the, uh, map, um, just past, uh, this area of Rayford heading west, uh, just on the other side of this church is a little, I guess, comic book store and then you've got Skybow Road. So it's, uh, fairly close to the intersection there, uh, Rayford and Skybow. Current land use in the area, as you know, a lot of that along Rayford Road is commercial as it shows up in our land use plan as well. Um, this is the property as it currently sits. Uh, there is a church to one side of it. And then this is just looking, uh, across the street, looking west on, uh, Rayford Road. This is, uh, Precision Tune is the company who's looking to, uh, move here and this is just some, uh, facade renderings that they've submitted, uh, you know, if they get the, uh, approval of the rezoning. And then this is basically what they're looking to do on the property. The, uh, grade area there along the left would be the actual, where all the bays for the, uh, car repairs would be. Uh, there are three proposed conditions, uh, hours of operation Monday through Friday, eight a, eight AM to six PM, uh, and Saturday, eight AM to five PM. No, uh, their business model does not have them operating on a Sunday. Um, they've offered to put a little thicker buffer than what is typically, uh, required by the UDO, uh, where they do a butt residential, which is basically around, along the backside of their property. And they'll put up a thirty-foot type D buffer, uh, back in that area. Uh, and they would have no overnight storage of vehicles on the outside of the building. Um, so no vehicles stored in the parking lots and things. Uh, on June thirteenth, the zoning commission held a public hearing regarding this. There were two speakers, uh, in favor and none in opposition. Uh, commission voted five zero to recommend approval. Uh, the commission and staff both recommend approval and that's based on the land use plan calls for heavy commercial, uh, their hours of operation, uh, limit, uh, when they will be there, when there might be conflicts between them and, uh, any residential, uh, near them. And then, uh, to further that, uh, lessening of conflict, they've, uh, conditioned in that increased type D buffer as well. Uh, any questions of staff before we open your public hearing?
I do have a couple of questions I have. So, Councilmember DeVier and then Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, Mr. Harmon, real quick, uh, can you go back to the diagram? One more. There you go.
Yes.
So can you explain a type D buffer so that we clearly understand and the listening audience understands type D dub, buffer? And where that would be?
Yeah, the type D buffer would basically be around down this property line and across the back property line.
And what is a type D buffer? What does that mean?
Our type D buffer is the city's, uh, uh, most stringent buffering, uh, to begin with. And typically, uh, it consists of, uh, not only, uh, full-sized trees, but shrubs and bushes as well. So it will maintain a fairly thick, uh, vegetative buffer between the two.
And how is the thirty feet determined?
Uh, from the property line, so.
No, I meant how is that space determined?
Oh, as far as.
Why thirty feet versus fifty feet?
Well, typically, uh, in the UDO, the type D buffer is.
Is thirty feet.
Well, you, you have two choices. It's either ten feet with a solid wood fence or it's twenty-five feet, uh, with the, uh, extra space plus more plantings. And so they're going a little even beyond that with more plantings.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Wright?
Uh, yes, Mr. Harmon, we could stay on that particular diaphragm, diagram right there. Um, my concern was with vehicles not being stored outside at night, um, what kind of, what kind of security would we have to make sure that that happens and where would they store the vehicles, uh, inside, I'm sure? But a lot of times when vehicles are repaired and the individuals don't pick them up and they already have vehicles inside, how can they prevent from not storing them outside? You know what I'm saying? Because, and I understand why you put that in there, but how can we assure that that would happen?
If you don't mind, I'd like for the owners, uh, to actually answer that question because they know their business operating model better than I do.
Uh, sworn in speakers, Madam Clerk.
Yes, they are. And, uh, but the nature of a business like Precision Tune is they're not, uh, they don't do heavy automotive repair, so it's, their, their business is based more on getting people in and out as quickly as possible. So it would probably be a very rare occasion where they've got any cars that are left overnight, you know, for them to have to look after anyway.
Ah, Mr. Harmon, I don't see any further lights. Any more lights? So, I guess at this time, Madam Clerk, we'll open the public hearing. Please call the first speaker.
Mayor Protem, we have two speakers for this item. The first speaker is Mr. Jason Albert.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jason Albert. Address is one oh-six Woodwinds Industrial Court, Cary, North Carolina. I am the potential buyer of this location. We want to thank City of Fayetteville for supporting us. We've been here since nineteen eighty-one, and we appreciate the zoning commission's unanimous support for this new location for us. I'm here to answer your questions in regards to your question. As he mentioned, our services are typically daily services, oil changes, tires, minor repairs, oil changes, that type of thing. So, the repairs are not extensive and would not typically result in cars staying for long periods of time. And for the security of our own customers' vehicles, we'd make every effort with that space available in the bays to move the vehicles inside the bays because we, as a company, don't want to be liable for any damages to our customers' vehicles. So, that would be our intention, is to make sure those go inside every night.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other questions for the first speaker? No, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, call the second speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Philip Joyner.
Welcome, Mr. Joyner.
My name's Philip Joyner, seven twelve Bell Drive, Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. And I'm with Matt Gay Associates, the civil engineering firm that's doing the site design. And I'm the engineer responsible for the site design that you've seen so far. And so, I'm just here if you have any technical questions concerning that.
Mr. Joyner, I don't see any lights, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, we have no further speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that being said, we're going to close the public hearing. Council, I'll look to you for action. Mr. Hearst?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I move to approve the special-use permit to locate an automotive repair business within a hundred feet of residential development in an LC district located at fifty-three twenty-seven Rayford Road, as presented by Mr. Harmon. With the three conditions that were listed earlier and based on the standards of the city's development code, and that application is consistent with applicable plans because, one, the development is located in a commercial zoning district; two, that it use applies with findings listed below; and the proposed permit is in the public interest because the proposed SUP is within character of the area. And it is to be effective ten days after approval by the city council this evening. And I feel like all eight findings were met. Thank you.
Seconded. Thank you for that very thorough motion here, Mr. Hearst. Seconded by Councilmember Wright. That's the way you make a motion. Any discussion on the motion, council?
You're trying to talk about me and Mayor Protem?
No, sir. No further discussion. Do you have a question? Councilmember... Oh, that's your vote. Mr. Moan, you up ahead it, right? Council will look to you for action for voting.
Green.
Madam Clerk, I think that's unanimous from Mayor, Councilmember Art, by phone, the others. Thank you. Moving right along, council, item seven point zero six, consideration of awarding of the contract for enhanced services for the Arts and Entertainment District-focused Downtown Municipal Service District, Cool Spring Downtown District Incorporated. Mr. Sharp?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem and members of council. Thank you for this opportunity to present this item tonight. As you mentioned, this is to hold a public hearing to authorize a contract for the enhanced services for arts and entertainment-focused Downtown Municipal Service District. Hopefully, this public hearing tonight will give the council an opportunity to hear the public on this matter. The public... There have been much information put out to owners and residents of the downtown through an online needs survey, where meetings were also held in regards to this process. The city staff developing a request for proposal for this proposed arts and enhanced services for arts and entertainment-focused Downtown Municipal Service District. We did receive four responses from the proposal, and tonight, we're recommending that the contract be awarded to the Cool Springs Downtown District Incorporated with a three-year contract. Their proposal includes a hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred dollars for that proposal. As you're looking your recommended action, I know we've had discussions about this, it also included an additional hundred thousand dollars that is in the budget as well. And so, council certainly has the opportunity to take action on that one hundred and one nineteen five for the proposal in addition to that one hundred thousand, whatever you decide on that. Did want to mention that you may ask the staff why the Cool Spring Downtown District... We have, in looking at their proposal, we noticed the strength of their response to providing the service, which were consistent with what was asked for in the proposal, as well as the history of those involved and the involvement of downtown planning, also the community involvement, and then just their total response to the package of what was being requested in RFP. We have members of that organization that are present tonight. If you have questions for them, some of them may be signed up to speak. So, without going into a whole lot of detail, I will close with that and see if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. I'm sure there'll be some questions as we do it. All ready? Got Councilmember Moan and Crisp?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to say a thank you to Mr. Reinstein and Mrs. Broyles and Ms. Coldbreath. They spent time with me Friday night when I had a series of questions, kind of reinforced, you know, how the money was going to be spent in some places. So, I do just want to say thanks. You know, that was Friday night. Listen, look forward to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Moan. Councilman Crisp?
Yeah, I like this project, but I need a point of clarity with the city attorney because at the beginning, when we amended the agenda, I think we called it eight point zero four, a public hearing for economic development.
Yeah, I heard that.
And we should have, it should have been amended appropriately for this as it is now. Do we have to redo that, or are we okay? You understand what I'm saying?
Well, we got you. And Madam Attorney, before you answer that, so Councilmember Crisp, that would come after the item after next. Is there any way we can address that once we do that?
That's a part of my question. If we... We're at seven point zero six. We cannot vote on it until we hold a public hearing, which we added to the agenda at eight point zero four.
No, no, no. Two different items.
Huh?
So, what Councilmember Deviary added was economic development public hearing?
Yes, sir.
It still should be under public hearings, which is his point, I believe.
Yes.
So, can we amend the item number? I think is his question.
Well, we talking two different things here now.
Yes, sir. Maybe you can clarify that.
My question is, we did not incorporate into the agenda a public hearing for seven point zero six. Right?
Seven point zero six is a public hearing. We added... Right, we called it eight point zero four, but we entitled it as a public hearing.
Okay, that... Now, you got my point. We're okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping us in compliance there, Councilmember Crisp. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Sharp. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, call the first speaker.
Mayor Protem, we have eight speakers signed up for this item. The first speaker is Mr. Patrick Callahan.
Eight speakers? He might want to speak for behalf of the eight.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, sir. Patrick Callahan, three twenty-five Hay Street. That's Fayetteville, North Carolina. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Cool Spring Downtown District as their current vice chairman of the board, and just wanted to thank you again, council and Mayor Protem, for giving us this chance to speak a little bit further after what you allowed us to do earlier tonight, try to answer a couple of the questions you raised. So, under the large heading of inclusivity, just wanted to talk about a couple of key points. We do have a board of directors, the inaugural board, the permanent board, that will be seventeen members strong. Several of those, many of those seats are specific or represent specific stakeholders. Did want to highlight that point, and that's an effort to include folks like the Arts Council, the Downtown Association, merchant groups, faith-based seat, artist, resident, restaurateur. And then, in terms of our at-large seats, without that requirement that they be rooted in the downtown, folks like business folks and philanthropists, Mrs. Linda Huff, the general manager of the Houston Astros, Mr. David Lane, and a number of other individuals. I won't go through the entire list, but suffice it to say, organizations like FTCC, Methodist, FSU, local attorneys and architects are represented on that board. The other piece about inclusivity, just to highlight quickly with regard to factors such as race, age, gender, our committees are open to the public. Have been extremely diverse. You'll hear from one of our folks later on tonight, speaking to that point in particular. I also wanted just to touch on accountability. I know that was a theme of some questions that council had raised earlier in the evening. One of the major points, Arts Council, of course, will be acting as our fiscal agent. So, you've got forty years of that proven track record of credibility. Another piece on accountability, we are nearing the completion of the hiring of a full-time CEO slash president. And with that, you know, ability that that person will bring, in addition, the hiring process of that is being led by Mr. Bill Pryor, who's the chief human resource officer for Cape Fear Valley, and brings that wealth of expertise to it. I also just wanted to talk about the last point, which to emphasize, return on investment. And I know some of your questions earlier tonight addressed that, but just to say it this way, the city and you all have made such a significant investment in downtown, factors such as the thirty-three million dollar ballpark, and we desperately want to see that maximize. We want to see, as I'm sure I do all of you, but part of the goal of this organization is to maximize that investment. Another piece is the hundred thousand of city funding that I understand may be in the budget if you approve it tonight. That will enable another hundred and fifty thousand that we will not get from a private foundation unless you specifically include that hundred thousand, not just the MSD funds. And with that being said, I just want to, if I could really quickly end on asking the folks who are here tonight on behalf of Cool Spring Downtown District to just stand so council gets a visual of who all is here on behalf of our organization. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Pending any questions for me, that's it, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Madam Clerk, are all of the speakers tonight in favor?
Yes, sir.
And, sir, have you all, you all have similar messages to advocate for the approval of this, or is there differences that we need to allow all eight speakers to come forth?
I would encourage you to allow them, but of course, that's your call. They do have different facets to talk about.
Sir, okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if you could call the next speaker?
Our next speaker is Mr. Henry Parfitt.
Mr. Parfitt, how you do, sir?
I'm great, thank you. I am Henry Parfitt. I live at one twelve Hay Street in downtown Fayetteville. Mr. Mayor Protem and city council, thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Cool Spring Downtown District for these MSD funds for the new arts and entertainment district. I will be giving you the perspective from the Downtown Alliance and someone who's been involved in the downtown scene for a very long time. After a year of hard work by many dedicated individuals from throughout the community, CSDD is ready to help the city create a thriving downtown, which is necessary for the new baseball stadium and other public-private partnerships to be economically successful and thus benefit the entire community. As founder and past president of the Downtown Alliance and as a current member of its board of directors, I assure you that we support CSDD as the organization to develop and guide the new arts and entertainment district. The Alliance was organized in nineteen ninety-nine as a five-oh-one-C-six nonprofit in order to, and I quote, "encourage business, residential, and retail growth in downtown Fayetteville, to promote the downtown to the public, and to represent the common interests of merchants, professionals, property owners, and residents," end quote. Now, it is true, we were also cheerleaders for downtown. We saw a need and we took to the challenge with events like Field of Honor, Candlelight Loft Tours, Dickens Holiday, the ever-popular carriage rides, and even Fourth Fridays. But at its core, the Downtown Alliance is a business association, and that is why it is classified as five-oh-one-C-six. All these events we do now have taken us away from our real mission of representing the interests of downtown merchants. The merchants need their own organization to address common problems, share business knowledge with each other, and, yes, conduct simple and easy street-level marketing like sidewalk sales and scavenger hunts. Many merchants have already volunteered to serve on the board of the reorganized Downtown Alliance. The Cool Spring Downtown District will work closely with the Alliance, and they have designated a board seat for an alliance representative, as well as a downtown restaurant owner, a downtown resident, and a member of the downtown faith community. It has been my privilege to serve on the transitional board of the CSDD for the past year, and I am familiar with nearly all the individuals who will be serving on the new board. Be assured that this group, along with the Arts Council as our fiscal agent, will use the funds from the city and other sources in a most prudent and effective manner to turn downtown into vibrant, thriving heart of our city that will help the new ballpark and other economic ventures succeed beyond your wildest dreams. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parfitt. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Ms. Deborah Mintz.
Ms. Mintz, how are you?
I am fine, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, and thank you very much for this opportunity. Mr. Mayor Protem and city council members, we're grateful for that. I'm Deborah Mintz. My address is six-ten Westmont Drive, Fayetteville, and I am the executive director of the Arts Council of Fayetteville, Cumberland County. The Arts Council is going to celebrate its forty-fifth birthday next year. That means for over forty years, the Arts Council of Fayetteville, Cumberland County has been working in partnership with the City of Fayetteville, Cumberland County, and the state legislature to provide services to this community. And the Arts Council has taken very seriously your intent for us to be effective, efficient, and accountable in the use of public and private dollars for this community. I've actually been there almost twenty-five of those forty-five years. That efficiency, effectiveness, and accountability doesn't always make us the most popular kid on the block, but it's your charge, and we take that very seriously. When studies indicated that an arts and entertainment district would be of great value to this community, the Arts Council Board voted to support the development, brought in consultants who were professionals in the field, and we immediately contacted Mayor Nat Robertson and then city manager Ted Voorhees to serve on the development of this district. Mayor Robertson appointed Mr. Crisp to serve. Mr. Voorhees elected to himself serve on this committee development. Over the course of two years, close to four hundred citizens have been involved in group, in task group sessions and involved in committees working in this. One of the things we did was to invite all of you to be interviewed by our consultants. The majority of you did accept that opportunity, and we are grateful. So, the result of all of this work is the Cool Spring Downtown District. And the Arts Council Board has asked me to come to you tonight to say, if you choose to provide funding to this district in whatever form you choose to provide it, the Arts Council is going to continue to do what we have done for over four decades. We are going to ensure effective, efficient, and efficiency and accountability. It's what your charge has been to us. The Arts Council Board respectfully requests that you support this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mintz.
Our next speaker is Takima Hoffman.
Hello. My name is Takima Hoffman. My address is sixteen sixteen Boris Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to stand before you and speak this evening. I've been a member of the Programming Committee for the Cool Springs Downtown District since October of twenty sixteen, and I've been serving as Chair of that committee since April of this year, and I'm here to represent for all of the volunteers, such as myself, and the other members of the committee that I'm working with, and the other members of the other four committees that are dedicated with this cause, who are dedicated to this cause, who have shown up and freely given their time, talent, ideas, resources, and energy in the service of this great work that is the development of our town, of our downtown, which is the heart of our city. We're members of the community who are putting in work for our community, and we're invested in enhancing the community through adding our efforts to the work that is already being done to help Fayetteville's art scene continue to deepen and expand, and to help downtown continue to evolve into a vibrant, welcoming, and inspiring space. And just speaking for myself personally, I was born and raised in Fayetteville, and I've been home now for about a year and a half after being gone for about nine years. And when I left, I had the intention of never returning to Fayetteville, because as a youth who aspired to be an artist, I felt like this city was not a place where I could be fed and inspired creatively in the ways that I wanted to be, and I'm glad to say that I was wrong about that. Since volunteering with organizations like the Arts Council and having the opportunity to work on initiatives like the Cool Springs Downtown District, I've been able to see Fayetteville with new eyes, and I'm excited to be here now and witness and participate in the city's blossoming, especially where the arts is concerned. So, I hope that you see the Cool Springs Downtown District and the work that we'd like to, to continue doing as a compliment to the tremendous work that you do on behalf of this city every day, and that you're led to provide us with the funding that we've requested to keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. William Pryor.
Welcome. Good evening. My name is William Pryor. My address is twenty-nine twenty-eight Sky Drive, and I represent the, I'm the Chair of the Staffing Committee for the Cool Spring Downtown District, and I've been pleased to be part of that for the last year, something I feel strongly about, being a relatively newcomer, nine years in this community, and I'm excited to tell you that the Staffing Committee is in the process of hiring a President/CEO for the Cool Spring Downtown District. This individual will bring our vision to life. We've received over twenty applications for this position from the city, from the county, the state, all with strong backgrounds and all very interested in this opportunity. So, our committee has screened those candidates and will interview two in Fayetteville this week, so we're moving it forward. The response demonstrates the Cool Spring Downtown District has strong support in this community. Thank you. In addition, the Staffing Committee also worked with members of the Board to create this permanent board that you've heard about from Patrick, who are committed to making this progress move forward and represent a wide variety of perspectives. So, as the others, I support the, the moving forward of the Cool Spring Downtown District, and I thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Regensberger.
Hello, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protam, council members, fellow citizens. My name is Mark Regensberger. I live at two-twenty Kirkwood Drive, and I'm here as a private citizen who is an Army veteran who's decided to make Fayetteville my home, and I have seen so many wonderful things done in this community over the last decade or so, and one of the things that really excites me is downtown. Now, if this is our home, we could think of Fayetteville as a house. There are a lot of private rooms. There are wonderful neighborhoods where people live. There are retail areas. There are places where people work. We've spent a lot of time on our gateways, if you will. Our gateways are sort of the curb appeal of our house, but I would propose to you that every really wonderful house has a front porch, a welcoming, inviting place where the people that live in that house can sit down and meet with each other and relax and get to know their neighbors. And so, I'm really excited hearing all the plans that all these people have for what we can do with our downtown. I was really encouraged, a couple of months ago in this very room, Mayor Bill Hurley was presented the award, the first Lafayette Award, and he talked about downtown's transformation, that it was a calling for thousands of us, and that he had been the cheerleader. Well, Mayor Hurley is earning his well-deserved rest now, and I would encourage you, this sounds like just a bunch of cheerleaders we need to make this town even better. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Mr. Stephen Barnard.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Stephen Barnard. I'm here representing Capital Encore Academy, it's an arts-integrated school on Hay Street, and also, as an Army veteran, like Mark, I came here ten years ago, and I lived downtown early in the process and seen just an amazing transformation, and, and I hope that your support of the arts and entertainment district will continue the synergy that we've built. As an Army veteran who chose to retire and, and put roots down here, we need to have a vibrant downtown, something that will, will keep peoples here. The quality of life is so important to keeping talent here in the community, and this district, I think, will go a long way toward making Fayetteville the destination that will make that reality. Thank you.
Our final speaker for this item is Mr. T.J. Jenkins.
Mr. Jenkins, welcome, sir.
Good evening, council. I would tell you this. I'm the President/CEO of the Rogen Company. We were one of the competing companies that presented to the RFP. They, now, that's, that's hard to follow. I commend everybody in their position and what they've been doing as well. And when I come to you in front of the council today, is ask for consideration for the marketing piece. As a proven business in Fayetteville located downtown for thirteen years, with a national focus as well as a local focus, we've been on the cutting edge of marketing advertising all over the United States for major brands, and wanting to be able to be involved in our community and do it on a local basis, instead of always having to travel outside of Fayetteville. So, I'm not here to, to necessarily go against the Cool Springs organization, because they are a great organization. I'm, I'm simply asking council to reconsider some of the items in the RFP which are predominantly focused on marketing and advertising. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Mayor Protam, we have no further speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, we're going to close the public hearing, and council will look for questions or, or action. I did have a question following Councilmember Wright.
The last gentleman that, that came up, can, can you come back and ask your question? Give me a little bit more clarity as far as what is your desire as far as marketing, and you want us to reconsider what?
Every aspect of the RFP that includes marketing and advertising. There are, there's a section, Section Three, that includes an entire portion of market advertising. There are event planning and things that traditionally fall under full-service marketing, marketing advertising agency, which we are for the past thirteen years.
Okay. That, that sounds real good, council. I would move to, to look at that and see based on.
Okay, so, prior to that, Councilmember Wright, I think there's a, I had a question or two before your motion. I'll circle right back to you. My question is for the spokesperson for the Cool Springs organization. First gentleman. All right. Sir, we had some of this discussion upstairs. You know, basically, if I read your proposal, right, the, the area is approximately .55 square miles, and it's bounded by Roanne Russell Robertson and Cool Springs Street, and it's located in the core of the city. You know, as you know, I'm, I'm from here. You may or may not know that, but there's been an awful lot of resources directed to downtown, and I do understand the concept that a thriving downtown attracts people. I'm excited to hear this young lady say she returning to Fayetteville. I'm trying to convince my daughters to do the same. But I am concerned that, that, about the, the perspective that, that your organization, we don't know very much about you since you're kind of new, you incorporated this year, has about what entertainment looks like for a diverse community. We, you know, almost evenly split, minorities and majorities evenly split. There's been some, some, some feelings in the past that some of the entertainment was not reflective of the community. You're asking for taxpayer dollars. My district has taxpayers that don't live in this .55 area. What are you going to do, one, to ensure that the entertainment or the perspective that you take is not that of more of the same, where you take city tax, public money, and do what a few consider to be entertaining? What are you going to do to address to make sure this is welcoming to all citizens, one? Two is, are you guys aware of the City of Fayetteville's policy about locally minority participation on their contract awardees, and have you given any consideration to include any small businesses like Mr. Jenkins, for instance, or some other small business that, that offers some facet of, of services that you offer? Because this is a broad RFP that you gave us with a multitude of services. What is your participation plan? And that's my two-part question.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, I'll have about a three-point answer here, but, but, you know, to the first point, in terms of what entertainment might look like, a great question. I wouldn't presume to sit here personally as an individual, of course, and answer that, but speaking on behalf of the organization, I, I think part of the answer is things like Takima Hoffman, who was up here to speak tonight, is the Acting Chair of the Programming Committee, and, and part of her job in that transitional time has been to conduct a gap analysis. So, first, to conduct an analysis of what exists in downtown for entertainment right now, and then to conduct a gap analysis, essentially, what's the difference between what our downtown looks like right now, and what do the, no kidding, ten other downtowns that were looked at in some of those beginning studies that have gone on for the past two to three years, that have involved four hundred-plus folks, that involve hundreds of hours of, of different people. So, again, that, that's really the answer, is where are the point of, what do we have, what differentiates us from some of those ten other really successful downtown art and entertainment districts across the country? And then the next step, which we're not quite there yet, but that we're postured to do for this coming year, is start advocating, funding where we can, leveraging and utilizing, this kind of gets to your other questions, as many local talents as we can to make our downtown every bit as exciting, vibrant, entertaining, filled with artists as those other ten. The other parts of the question, I think you're asking, so is there a current plan to involve small businesses? I can't speak to that plan yet, but as you know, we're a new organization, though we're built upon those four hundred-plus folks, Arts Council, Downtown Alliance, multiple other stakeholder groups, lots of decades of experience in the folks on our board, but we're a new organization. So, we don't have the answer yet in terms of what those small businesses might be, what the local marketing folks might be, but we were taking notes of, of this gentleman as he spoke, and that's certainly someone we want to look at.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Counsel, any further questions, or, Mr. Wright?
Yes, that pretty much answered my question, would, would have been, do you plan on subcontracting some of your marketing pieces and other pieces, you know, pretty much to local, small businesses here in, in the City of Fayetteville, and you pretty much answered that, so we look forward to that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Devia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam, and if there's no other questions, I'd like to offer a motion. I move that we, based on staff recommendation and their work on this RFP, I move that we approve the contract award of the Cool Springs Downtown District Incorporated for enhanced services for the arts and entertainment-focused downtown municipal service district in the amount of one-hundred-nineteen thousand five hundred from the MSD funds, and approve a hundred thousand from the general fund to provide enhanced services. The total contract award would be two-hundred-nineteen thousand five hundred.
Second. Counsel, we have a motion by Councilmember Devia, seconded by Councilmember Chris. Any discussion on the motion? In the discussion phase, I do have a question. I'm sorry, running this gentleman back and forth, maybe, maybe he can answer it from there. He can walk. Absolutely. So, I did have, I did have a question. I know that there have been some, some caveats tonight about some of our concerns. There's a motion on the floor for action. Your organization is new. You're not up and running. You have pending 501(c)(3) seeds. You have some other things that are pending. When were you guys planning on being operational?
Great question. We'll be operational as of July first, two thousand and sixteen. Now, that, as I mentioned upstairs, that 501(c)(3), again, we haven't, obviously, Bob Ray has agreed to, to do that work for us. We've started that work. The, that application, if successfully accepted, that'll become retroactive to the date those articles of incorporation were filed, so that piece isn't an issue. And in terms of the professional staff, you heard Mr. Pryor talk about, we're completing that search and intend to hire Thursday of this week for the CEO. The third staff, or the second staff piece that you haven't heard much about, the current folks who are providing that MSD services in the district, we're in the process of looking at transferring that staff over to us, but our intent is to be a hundred percent operational as of July one.
And, Mr. Devia, this is your motion. Were you looking for the three-year commitment as presented here, or was this a single year? And, and my, my second piece to that is, are you amenable to conditionally approving the, the RFP award with some of those questions coming back to us, since, since this gentleman is still in the process of becoming operational?
Mr. Protam, Mr. Mayor Protam, I would, I would be, I would entertain that they come back and give us information. It's a three-year contract. I believe that's what the city manager has requested, because this is really him outsourcing services, just like as we look at outsourcing any other, and we talk about multi-year contracts. I think it's important that we do the same here, and we're consistent when we talk about outsourcing services, and I think a three-year contract is the right, is the right vehicle.
We can ensure that, I'm sure that our manager has been thorough in the fact that
if there's failure to perform, we have an out, and I'm sure there'll be some direct guidance when they come back with metrics and things like that, and I'm confident our city manager will put those things in place.
Question.
Yes, sir. I see Ms. Jensen, and, oh, okay, was, is that you, Mayor, or Councilmember?
That's, that's me. I've got a question on the motion.
Yes, sir.
That is, I know that the budget allowed for the, for this money to be set aside, but, Mr. Devia, what's the origin of this money?
I'm not following your question, Mr. Mayor. Part of it is from the general funds, and part of it is from the MSD tax.
Okay, that's what I wanted, the separated, just some clarification.
Yes, sir.
And I've, I've still not seen the, the agreement or the contract. Is that available?
So, if the council approves the motion and the award, then a contract would be drafted that would incorporate those items, and if it is the interest to say that we would have metrics and bring it back, then yes, we would do that as well.
What was the last part, Mr. Manager?
We would do that as well.
No, I heard that part, but you said, what did you say about the metrics?
If there are certain metrics that you would like to see included in the performance contract, we'll be happy to include those as well, and we can work, if council approves it, to have that ready for your discussion at your August work session, to show you what the contract looks like. But with the award, if you make the award tonight, we would move fairly quickly to try to stand this organization up as they are ready to start July first, and that would... and, um, that would be our hope, that they would be...
Mr. Mayor Protim, again, in reference to the motion, uh, I think it would be reasonable for us to ask to see the contract before we approve the item.
Well, I, I con, I concur, and I, I just had a follow-up question, uh, Mr. Manager, so... The only, only hesitation I have is that, uh, so you incorporated earlier this year, in March, and you, and you have some, some, some notable names, uh, as part of your organization, but it's still a new organization, and you're looking for a three-year commitment, and we don't have a contract, which, that is not unusual, but we don't know what the outs are, uh, until the contract is drafted and, and executed. And so my concern is that it's a new op, new operation that we're gonna give tax dollars to, one, which we had to get additional guidance, from my understanding with the previous arrangement with the Downtown Alliance, uh, we're getting additional tax dollars that are funding half of this, general fund, general taxpayer dollars are funding the other half. How are we ensure that the people's money is protected with a new organization, uh, and you're asking for a commitment for three years on our end without a contract that explains any caveats?
Several levels of answer to that. I'd say the first one is, um, if you've been happy with Downtown Alliance and the services they've provided in that entire downtown region for over the past two years, and I believe that would be a yes, um, and, and, and if there are areas you'd like improved, by all means, we'd like to know it, and in fact, you have an ex officio seat, one of you ideally would have an ex officio seat on our board, so that would be an easy conduit to be sure that we're providing the service that you would like. But the other part of the answer is that if you haven't, you know, appreciated and found those services you're receiving under Downtown Alliance acceptable, you'll be having the exact same people do it now under our umbrella.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Jensen, De- Devier, and Chris.
I, I think my question has been answered, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen, Councilmember Devier.
Yes, sir, thanks, uh, Mr. Mayor Protim. Uh, I just wanted to, so normally when we let an RFP, we authorize the manager to move forward, award the, award the RFP, and then move forward with the contract. If, if it makes the council more comfortable to bring that contract back, we sometimes do that, if this is a situation where we need to do it, I'm comfortable with that, although we just let a half a million dollar contract, and we're not bringing that one back for signature, for us to review either, earlier tonight. But if that makes the council more comfortable for this, um, I'm minimal to that as well.
Uh, Councilmember Chris?
Uh, Councilman Devier said what I intended to say. Normally, we accept an RFP, and then if we accept it, then the contract is drawn. In this case, there are concerns, and so I'm the second on his motion, and I would have no problem approving this tonight and bringing the contract to us at our August work session.
So that is a friendly amendment that you accept, uh?
Well, Mr. Mayor, or, excuse me, Mr. Mayor Protim, I, if that answers the mayor's question, and his concerns, and it answers your concerns, I'm, I'll add that as an amendment.
Well, I, I think that, uh, on, on my end, the only hesitation I had is because this is a new organization, and, and, and I'm still unclear as to the relationship between the Downtown Alliance, the previous group, who we had this contract with, uh, and your organization. And at, at one hand, you're saying you're different, on the other hand, you're saying it's the same people and an umbrella, so can you give me a little clarification on that? I mean, there are just some unknowns, so I, I'm okay with approving it in principle, but this is a lot of money of the people for a lot of years, and, and, uh, two hundred fifty thousand dollars over three years is almost a million dollars, and, uh, we have to ask questions. We don't have anything concrete in writing with a new organization for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, and I think it's irresponsible to, to do that without asking questions, so...
Absolutely, happy to answer the questions, so, and it is a, a slightly complicated relationship in the sense that, so Downtown Alliance was providing those enhanced services for over the last two years. Um, when I mentioned that, uh, the same individuals who were providing that service would be providing them under us, I'm, I'm referring to the idea that we're working to bring, uh, those staff, uh, individuals who are doing that into our organization. That's, that's part of the, um, you know, initial startup challenge, um, for us, and that's the plan. You know, in terms of clarifying that relationship further, uh, Mr. Parfitt spoke on, um, as both a, a DTA board member, past president of it, and a current board member, you know, for us, um, in terms of giving the endorsement, um, to us, but in terms of further defining it, he also mentioned Downtown Alliance was started as a 501(c)(6) organization, a merchants' association, that really grew beyond that scope a little bit. The intent, part of the intent behind this is to allow them to return to being just a merchants, and I don't mean that in a negative way, but, but to, uh, assume the scope that which, with which they were founded. So they'll return to being more of a merchants' organization, and we will assume a much broader umbrella. The third way I define how we're related to them, so Downtown Alliance, as part of our bylaws, has to, uh, give us two slates of names, that then our organization selects one board seat from it. So that goes back to that seventeen-person board, and inclusivity, and representing multiple stakeholder groups, including an ex officio seat for city council, and ex officio seat for county board of commissioners.
Thank you, sir, I think I see a light with, uh, Councilmember Jensen.
Um, yes, I was gonna ask, is there any way we could get a copy of those bylaws? And I guess my other question is, um, the makeup of the board, that, um, I, I understand that you're gonna have an ex officio member from the city council and the county. Is the county putting any money, is county commissioners putting any money into this? Or they bring anything to the table?
Yes, Councilwoman Jensen, so, in, two answers to that. The county, we're in a process of, of discussing with them, clearly it's happening after...
So they haven't given you any, any commitment to it?
Correct, that's what was on the budget as well, yes.
Okay, so if they don't give a commitment, are they still gonna be an ex officio on the board with the city, with us? I guess what I'm trying to say is, I mean, I'm not, I'm gonna come out and say it, I guess, we're gonna give the money, and we're gonna have just as much on the board, you know, I think, i- if we do go through this, I think that a member of the city council should be on the board, and I think that they might need to be two of us, instead of just one, just my opinion.
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen, Councilmember Wright?
I have some concerns as well, but, um, the question that I have is, your board members, I guess, the executive board members, uh, so you have several different types of boards broken down into responsibilities throughout. Um, do you have any criterias of board members, um, that would have private funding or pri- to privately fund the organization to obtain a seat on the board? How's that work?
Let me answer that directly, Councilman Wright, so no, there is no requirement to fund, uh, in order to gain a seat. There is a requirement, um, of board members, I mean, so there was a matrix that was worked up in terms of evaluating prospective applicants to the board. Um, there were, there was sort of a minimum set of, uh, requirements that were, uh, membership in the organization, uh, of which anyone is welcome to, even if they didn't live nowhere near Fayetteville, frankly. Um, a certain number of hours, I think we set it at two hours per, uh, month, and timely communication, so it was meant to be very broad and inclusive in terms of, it would, uh, it would restrict it from no one.
Yeah, I, I just don't want to have, uh, board members feeling like, um, they have ownership, or, um, there has to be a commitment to them for whatever reason. Uh, I would love to, um, believe that all the board members, regardless of, of what, what area they come from, or responsibility, will feel obligated to the city and the citizens, um, and that there be no politics involved. Thank you, sir.
Um, sir, I just, I just had a couple of follow-up points, uh, I don't know if you're familiar, you say you have been in this area, you're from Fayetteville?
I've been here about ten years.
About ten years, so there, there was a, there was an arrangement that was through the Chamber of Commerce that had a spin-off of an alliance, and it was very complicated, and, and they received tax dollars for a decade, okay? And nobody knew who was running the show. Um, I'm, I'm a little bit reminded of it just because the, you know, you're, you're clarifying what the relationship is gonna be, but a- as they say, we don't have any bylaws, we don't have any specifics to it. Um, and so that is somewhat of a, of a concern that I have. Um, the other thing is, is that I'm looking at your executive director position budget, it goes from forty thousand to ninety thousand over the next few years, proposed buzzet, budget? Or it's eighty, eighty-six, and eighty-eight? So it starts at eighty thousand?
Sorry, can you repeat that question?
The executive director of the organization that you're forming, salary starts at eighty thousand, it goes up to eighty-six, and it goes up to eighty-eight. For a new organization, isn't that a significant increase of ten percent, what is it, five and...
Actually, it starts at eighty-five, isn't it?
Eight, eight point something, but the idea behind that was, that's, again, that whole budget is a, is an estimate, essentially. However, with respect to that, uh, raise, that, the idea behind it was, that would be the maximal amount, so for outstanding performance. And again, as, as, um, uh, Mr. Pryor alluded in his search, I mean, this is an extensive, y- you know, uh, statewide, at least, search, and to retain that kind of talent, you know, we wanted the flexibility to be able to offer raises based on performance, but again, that's the maximum raise.
And, and the other question I have is for the manager, uh, Mr. Manager, we were notified that we were out of compliance with our contract with the Downtown Alliance, uh, yeah, the concerns of whatever made that contract not viable, have they been addressed with this spin-off or umbrella or subsidiary organization that we're talking about?
Yes, sir, fully.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protim, if I may, just the issue I was chatting about with Victor, um, we did submit bylaws, so, uh, Mr. Sharp has them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any further questions, uh, on the Devier, Chris motion?
Hey, Mr. Mayor Protim, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So I, I wanna go back to the county's participation. When I look at the pro forma budget, it's got a city-county contribution of a hundred thousand dollars, that's a city-county contribution. So my question is, what's the impact if the county doesn't fund anything? And, and then, if the county doesn't fund anything, what's the impact if the city doesn't fund anything?
Great question, Mr. Mayor. So with respect to the county, um, th- there is a two thousand sixteen projection that looked at a hundred thousand from the county by year for three years, then there is a two thousand seventeen projection that looked at zero, which I think, uh, Councilwoman Jensen was highlighting earlier, um, highlighting the zero contribution currently agreed to from the county. I also alluded at that time that we have some, uh, informal discussion pursuing a process that may result in, in county funding, again, obviously after the budget in the fall. Was there more to your question, Mr. Mayor?
That's Mr. Arp.
Well, it's not, it's not the mayor, this is Mr. Arp.
I apologize.
So, you know, I, I guess my concern is, I, I don't, I don't like the concept of the county having a seat if the county's not making a financial contribution. So I'd, I'd like a commitment. If the county's not gonna make a financial contribution, they don't get a seat. You willing to make that commitment?
Well, Mr. Arp, Councilman Arp, I'm, I'm one person, I can't make that commitment on behalf of the organization, I can take that back to it, uh, of course, and we can discuss it, and just in full disclosure, th- this exact point was debated, uh, hotly by the Transitional Board. Do we offer a seat, uh, an ex officio seat to the county and to the city, um, when at that point, no one had actually, uh, committed to funding? Um, so we did a little bit take a leap of faith, uh, in the hope that the, the city would fund us, both at that hundred thousand dollar level and for the MSD funding, and we amended our bylaws, uh, in the last month to give that ex officio seat to the city, and at the same time, the argument prevailed, although it was a, it was a tight vote, that , uh, we should not exclude, uh, the county, and that we should offer them a seat and be proactive and continue the dialogue, in the hope that we will, uh, receive funding from them this year, and most importantly, open the dialogue and be sure that this Downtown Art and Entertainment District is an economic generator and a resource, not just for the City of Fayetteville, but for the entire county.
Yeah, I, I, listen, I, I understand, but, but I'm not digging to hope. Uh, so, you know, without a commitment from the county, you know, I don't think they get a seat at the table, and to that will affect my vote, thank you.
Let me see.
Welcome, sir.
Uh, any, any further questions?
Yeah.
Call...
Yeah.
Been a lot of discussion, we'll call for a question after restating of the motion. Uh, Councilmember Devier?
I have a, I have...
Oh, you have a question? Mr. Chris?
I wanna say this, and I think it's important. The county didn't go with us on the baseball stadium, but we're on our own here, we're talking about the City of Fayetteville, and let's not get caught up too much in what the county is, is not doing. They are the fathers of this county, we're a part of the county, we're not here to start bashing the county tonight on what they should do or what they should not do. Let's stay focused on what we're doing for economic growth and development for the City of Fayetteville.
Mr. Chris, I'm not... Disagree, uh, it's not a matter of, I mean, I don't mind the county participating, I just don't think that you'd be a voting member. As long as we continue the county's way, we're gonna pay the county's way. A- and we, we, you know, when we went in and tried to have a discussion about sales tax, or sales tax contribution, we were told pretty frankly, to get in our line, thank you.
All right, uh, Councilmember McDougal?
Thank you, Mayor Protim, I've, uh, listened to, to everybody, and I've, I've really been a little slow with this, um, kinda kept quiet just to listen, but I am in favor. Uh, I think it's kinda late in the game for us to, to try to change courses, I, I like the movement that's going on downtown, uh, of course, I understand all of the concerns that we have, and hopefully, uh, CCSD, did I get it right?
CCSD, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully you have heard our concerns, and you will do everything in your powers to, to make sure that you, um, address a lot of them. Glad to see you and Mr. Jenkins trading cards, at least, that's a start, that means you have each other's phone numbers. And, um, we could move forward in a good positive direction. This city is on a, is on a, a really good course, and, um, I worked on Hay Street, I worked on Green Street, and, um, when there was nothing there, and to see what's going on now is such a great improvement, and that progress, I would not care to see it stop. Again, I think I said this before, the, to this council, I don't frequent down here, uh, very much, except to come here to this meeting, I'm not in the nightlife, um, but I did babysit on Saturday night for my children while they were down here, and my nieces and nephews, they were down here doing some paint by something, I don't know what it was. I just know I had nine extra grandkids and nieces and nephews at my house, and they didn't come home till eleven-thirty, I was like, man, are they ever gonna come home? So I'd like to see that kind of process, you know, continue, because it, it keeps my children and other young people in our city and keeps them vibrant, so I don't, I don't wanna see that stop, and I think a part of that has to do with, uh, the discussion that , uh, Mayor Protim brings up, and, uh, you know, how we are diverse in our presentation of, of everything that it is that we do. I have some good friends that come all the way out of, out of Sanford to come here, uh, and to go visit certain places, so we wanna keep that progress going, you know?
Thank you, Councilmember McDougal, uh, Councilmember Jensen?
Um, yes, sir. I, I need to, I think that we all want to make this work, and we all want to feel good about making it work, and we are, some of us are struggling on the way this is coming about. Um, I do have a problem, and nobody's gonna get any more headache over saying what I'm getting ready to say than me sitting right up here. I feel very strongly, and Mr. Chris, you said some very powerful words there, but I, I have to go back, Parks and Rec, we're doing it on our own, we're doing the baseball field by our own, you know, this is another thing, and they need to come in with us if we're gonna do this. Now, again, I think we all wanna make this work, and you say you're one person, you can't do that, but it would change my mind a lot if the city council up here had some kind of, on the board, some voting, and if they decide not to be and give any money, that they have no voting. I know as an ex officio, you can't vote, but I think that the city, if we're gonna come in here and bring this money, that we deserve a vote at the table. That could change my mind on some way I vote. That could change my mind on some way I vote.
May I re-
If we want to amend the motion.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Jensen. Uh, Mr. Moan, I see you got both your lights on.
He been saying you treating him, you treating him like you, like the mayor treats me.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
No, I, you know, I did have some concerns earlier last week when I saw the request, you know, the response to the RFP sent out a, well, list, several questions, things highlighted. Have, most of those have been answered. The time we spent upstairs, you know, before the meeting, uh, I thought that was some good dialogue, getting some of those things addressed. What I heard council say, they, they didn't want to see the bylaws, right? And Mr. Sharp has the bylaws, he could email them out. And, uh, once this gets approved, then the city manager will work on an actual contract based on the response to the RFP. And I believe the city manager heard some of the council's concerns, you know, minority, local business participation on some of the, some of the pieces and parts as this moves forward. And I'm, I'm sure that could be put into the contract, which then we would see in August. So, um, I, I feel comfortable tonight based on everybody's input over the last, you know, uh, four or five days. Thank you.
Mr. Moan always knows how to bring it home. We, we're going to call for questions, gentlemen?
Call for it.
And ladies?
You want me to restate the motion? Mayor, Mayor Protem, you want me to restate the motion? So I move that we approve the contract award to the Cool Springs Downtown District Incorporated for enhanced services for the arts and entertainment-focused downtown municipal service district in the amount of a hundred nineteen thousand five hundred from the, from the MSD district funds, municipal service district funds, and approve a hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to provide enhanced services. The total contract award would be two hundred nineteen thousand five hundred. Direct the city manager to bring the contract back to council for final approval because I seriously doubt he wouldn't have it any other way.
And I did second that motion.
Am I right, Mr. Manager?
Our council's been restated and properly seconded. I ask for your votes. Sir, what'd you say, Mr. Mayor?
Come back to council for final approval?
Yes, sir, that's what I added in. The contract will come back to council for final approval.
And Mr. Devia?
Thank you for adding that.
Yes, sir.
Just had a question. I know we're going to make substantial investments here that the MSD funds in this district anticipate to go up with the valuations. Um, this is capped off at the two nineteen, is that correct? Sir?
That's a one-
So, so as the revenues go up with the, with the build-ons, Mr. Manager, since the contract doesn't exist, all this is hypothetical. But as the, as the investment of sixty-seven million dollars comes in, your ten percent, uh, that the MSD pays, if, if it's included, if there's any increase in valuation in the MSD, are those funds automatically remitted over, uh, as part of this arrangement?
No, sir, this is a contract for service as well as support for the arts and entertainment district in the amounts that were listed.
Thank you. Let's vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous from all.
Hold on, hold on. I haven't voted yet.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Arp. One of, I heard one of the greens, uh.
I, I'm going to vote for that. I want the county to participate.
Nine to one, all in favor. Uh, Councilmember Arp proposed, based on-
The county participates.
County participation. Thank you. Counsel, I think we, we deserve a five-minute break. Motion carries. Thank you.
Come on and join. All right, council, go back into session. Item seven point zero seven, Mr. Schufert.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, council members. I'm not going to have a PowerPoint presentation for either of my two items here tonight because y'all are familiar with them and it's also getting late. As you know, the Urban Land Institute, the Renaissance Plan, the Cultural Arts Plan, and Main Street Study, among others, recommended some adjustments to the types of drinking and entertainment establishments in our downtown to make it more vital. And as we've been studying that in accordance with your direction after the approval of the separation amendment that allowed in the downtown for, through the special use permit process, that you can approve a variance in effect for the separation between certain types of uses and those serving alcohol. We felt like we'd come across something that constituted a low-hanging fruit with brewpubs and micro distilleries and microbreweries. And in our study, we noted that communities often use these types of uses as a way to revitalize their communities. In our discussions with the Fayetteville Police Department, we found that they felt brewpubs and micro distilleries and that sort of thing were innocuous use and not prone to creating some of the problems that can occur. So with that, I'll just talk a little bit about the ordinance. The ordinance first defines brewpubs, micro distilleries, breweries, distilleries, and microbreweries. And these are very industry-specific definitions that we use, that are commonly used in these sorts of ordinances. And we have come to that conclusion based upon extensive staff research. The, each of these uses is allowed in the appropriate zoning districts as either permitted or special uses depending upon their scale and the type of zoning district. The ordinance would exempt brewpubs, microbreweries, and micro distilleries from separation standards subject to certain standards such as outdoor seating closing at 11:00 PM, some limits on live entertainment, and that sort of thing. This has been recommended to you for approval by the Planning Commission last week by unanimous seven to nothing vote. Staff recommends it well. I understand we don't have any speakers for the public hearing, so I'll conclude my remarks. See if you have any questions for me, then Mayor Protem, you can open and close the public hearing for a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Schufert, and we'll do just that, open and close the public hearing. Council, go to you for questions or action.
Questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Curious if the Chamber of Commerce had any input and what that might have been.
No, sir, well, I don't believe we specifically asked the Chamber of Commerce for input on this particular ordinance, although there's certain Chamber of Commerce members were involved in the discussion. Their board has not taken official action on this.
Mr. Mayor, any more questions?
No, thank you very much.
Any questions to council? If not, I'll look to you for action.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Protem. If there's no further questions, I move we approve the proposed amendment.
Council member, we will need to open and close the public.
He already did, Mr. Schufert.
Oh, he did? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Schufert. Mr. Protem, Mr. Mayor Protem, I move we approve the proposed amendment as outlined by the staff to define and regulate brewpubs, microbreweries, and related uses.
That's a motion by Councilmember Devia, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hirsch. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Let's take a vote.
Green. Green.
Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Mr. Schufert, just want to say, you said this is your last week. I'd like to say over the last four years, you've been very responsive to any inspection code issues and other things, so the city in favor appreciates you. I appreciate your insight and what you've done for our community, so we'll miss you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and I just want to say it's been an honor.
You going fishing?
No, sir, I'm going back to work.
Going back to work. All right. Council, item eight point zero one, other items?
That was.
Is this you again, Mr. Schufert?
Yes, sir.
I'll save my nice remarks to the end.
Well, you know, apparently you can't get rid of me. In this particular item, this is a series of code amendments, six of them to be specific, that the public hearing has already been held and it's been closed, so that's why it's an other items of business item. Per your direction, these six ordinances have been prepared, one for each of the code amendments to allow for separate votes. I'll go through them one at a time, and if you want to vote on each of them at a time, I think that's probably the best way to go. The first ordinance adds parks and recreation facilities to the Business Park Zoning District and does not require these uses to count towards the percentage limitation in support of commercial uses, things like hotels and restaurants in the Business Park Zone. So that is that item. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Schufert. Don't see any lights at this time, so.
Mayor Protem, motion to approve?
Thank you. Councilmember McDougal, there's a motion. It's a second by Councilmember Wright to approve as presented. Any discussions on the motion?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I just have one question, and it relates to all of these draft ordinances. What is the appellate process?
Councilmember Arp, each of these can be, depending upon their circumstance, have some potential for appeal, but when you adopt a change to the zoning ordinance, it can only be appealed through, through an appeal to Superior Court. Now, there are components to zoning ordinances that have appeals in them, so if you're, for example, setting up a special use permit process or a variance process, then there are appeal approaches that deal with that. I don't know if the city attorney's got anything to add to that or not. She does not.
Thank you, Mr. Schufert. Any other, Councilmember Arp, were you good on that?
Well, I guess, I guess my only, and I'll wait till the ordinance comes up that I have a question about. Go ahead, sir.
Counsel, any further discussion? Mr. Devia.
Please restate. Is it for all of the amendments, or are we just on A?
Just A.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
All right, counsel, any further discussion? If not, ask for your vote.
Green. Green.
Counsel, that is eight to two, voting against, Councilmember Devia and Moan. Thank you, Mr. Schufert.
All right, item B deals with multi-axle trailers. This is one that generated the most discussion last time we had it before you. A year or so ago, council adopted a comprehensive ordinance dealing with trailers and RVs in the front yards. Multi-axle trailers were put into a category where if someone wanted to install one of them in a residential district, they would have to go through a community compatibility process before the Planning Commission. Planning Commission has since held or heard hearings on five of these, and at their recommendation, they suggested that you add multi-axle trailers into the same category as RVs and single-axle trailers that would not require that community compatibility step. So it's, they're suggesting that as a recommendation to you, and obviously there was considerable discussion last time. I'm anxious to see what comes from tonight's.
Well, Councilmember McDougal's got one for you, so I'll see his later.
A motion to disapprove.
Got a motion and second by Councilmember Chris to deny the request for this item. Any discussion on the motion? If none, see, council will vote on motion to deny or disapprove.
Green. Green to deny.
Madam Clerk, that's unanimous in the denial of the request.
Okay, thank you. Item C increases density allowed for certain residential uses in the neighborhood commercial district in accordance with some changes we've been making in different commercial districts to increase density.
So have a motion by Councilmember Wright to approve item C. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember McDougal. Any discussion on the motion? All of, council will vote?
Red. I'm red without one.
Madam Clerk, that is eight to two. Voting in opposition was the mayor and Councilmember Arp. Motion carries.
Item D is an extension of the expiration period for certificates of appropriateness. Those are the certificates that are issued by the Historic Resources Commission for Historic Design. Currently, they expire in six months without an opportunity to appeal, and this ordinance would change it to one year with an additional six months extension allowed with cause. So this makes it consistent with how we handle special use permits, and we agree that this is an appropriate step because six months is often not enough time to get some, something ready for a building permit.
We should disapprove.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Schufert, have a motion by Councilmember Chris, second by Councilmember McDougal. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Protem, this is what drove my question about an appellate process. So, you know, I'm not in opposition of this, but what I find striking is in one case we have an appellate process and in other cases we don't.
Thank you, Councilmember Arp. Is there any response to the consistency, Mr. Schufert?
I'm not sure I quite understand the issue the council members trying to get at, but it, what this deals with is a, a process of approving a particular type of request. And in that circumstance, there is an opportunity for an appeal, whereas in establishing what the zoning standards are, such as the last item where you're establishing the density, then that's not something that someone can appeal because that's basically a dimensional standard, if you will, that is something that's not variable or appealable. So in this case, it's a process. It's like a special use permit process. If you're not happy with the result, then there are appeal options, whereas if you want to come in and put forty units an acre in the neighborhood commercial district, then it'll last.
I'm in agreement with this, so unless you really want to continue to explain, I'm good with this one, okay?
Yes, sir. I'm happy to stop.
Question?
Very happy.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. McDonald, this is still consistent with North Carolina state law. Thank you.
Previous question.
Big part, Mr. McDougal.
I'll call for previous question, yeah.
Call for question. All right, council, all of, let's vote.
Green. Green.
Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Schufert.
Okay, the next to the last one is E. This would enable administrative adjustments for utility providers during and after emergencies so if they needed to do something that was temporary to address an emergency situation. We had one utility provider that needed to put in some storage tanks to provide electricity after Hurricane Matthew, and it seems like this is an appropriate thing to allow us to do.
Motion approved.
A motion by Councilmember McDougal, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Moan. Any discussion on the motion? Council asks for your vote.
Green. Green.
Madam Clerk, that's unanimous.
And item F deals with something that we typically receive requests for during holiday times from churches and other nonprofits who are interested in having portable shipping containers that they can use to store food or toys for a short period of time, and we kind of struggle with that because we don't allow that to happen in certain other cases, but this is for just short periods of time during certain times of the year, and we feel like it's an appropriate thing and would recommend that you approve it.
Have a motion by Councilmember Wright. Is there a second to approve? Second by Councilmember McDougal. Any discussion on the motion? If none, council will ask for your votes. Madam Clerk.
Green. Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schufert. Enjoy retirement. Item eight point zero two, adoption of the Capital Project Ordinance 2017, appropriate grant award from Golden Leaf, who presented a great check tonight. Does that, you got some more money?
No, that's the same money that was given earlier. Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of council. Part of the check that we received tonight, or I should say, the check that we received tonight included, part of it was the award for Spru Street Phase Two and the cleanup for some of the creeks that included Blount's Creek, Branson Creek, Hybert's Branch, and Bucket Creek. The amount for Spru Street Phase Two was eight hundred and seventy-three, eight hundred and seventy-one, and the amount for the debris cleanup is nine hundred and ninety-three thousand. Basically, what we're doing tonight is we're asking to adopt the Capital Project Ordinance for Spru Street Phase Two and the Special Revenue Fund Project Ordinance for the multiple creek debris removal so we can appropriate those grant awards and move forward with the projects.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, look to you for action to adopt this.
Motion. Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve the recommendation, the Capital Project Ordinance 2017-56 for the Spru Street Storm Drainage Project, the Special Revenue Fund Project Ordinance for multiple creek debris and debris removal as presented.
Thank you, Councilmember Arp, and second by Councilmember Devia. Councilmember Devia, do you have a question, or was that a, any discussion on the Arp, Devia motion? If none, council will ask for your vote.
Green.
Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item eight point zero three, adoption of the 2017-2018 budget ordinance and fee schedule.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of council. Tonight.
Listen, don't let him off anymore. I mean, he come back, can't talk, he took two days off.
So at least if he's hoarse, we know he'll be brief instead of. So we're counting on you, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. As you know, we presented the budget to you on May eighth. The budget documents have been available to the public for review in the office of the city clerk as well as on the city's website since that date. The council has held five work sessions, the last of which was last Monday on June nineteenth. The public hearing required was held on the twenty-second, and we received comments from residents at that meeting as well. The council voted for final direction on the changes to this manager's recommended budget at the June nineteenth special meeting, again, that was held last Monday. The $227 million total expenditures across all funds, of which 166 million is general fund expenditures. The general tax rate to be adopted tonight is at 49.95 cents per $100 of valuation, and it is unchanged from the current tax rate. It is also 2.75 cents below the calculated revenue neutral tax rate of 52.7 cents following the revaluation process that was held by Cumberland County earlier. The central business tax district tax rate proposed to remain at 10 cents. The Lake Valley Drive MSD tax rate is proposed to increase from 33.6 cents to 39.4 cents, and the residential solid waste fee proposed to increase from $64 to $108 per year. The stormwater fee proposed to increase by 50 cents per month through an equivalent of 425 per month or a new annual fee of $51 per equivalent residential unit. From the recommended budget, the city council made several modifications. One was the addition of Sunday bus service, the addition of funding for a downtown parking study, and the removal of a planned funding for a parking deck behind City Hall. These changes have been incorporated into the FY 2017-18 budget ordinance that you have in your agenda packet tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Manager.
And so the recommended action, Mayor Protem, is council is asked to adopt the following items, fiscal year 2017-2018 budget ordinance, fiscal year 2017-2018 fee schedule, fiscal year 2017-2018 strategic plan, fiscal year 2018-2022 capital and technology improvement plans, capital project ordinances 2018-1 through 2018-12, and capital project ordinance amendments 2018-1 through 2018-12. And that is the recommended action.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Chris.
Mayor Protem, I move that we adopt the fiscal year, budget of fiscal year, put that back on. Twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen budget ordinance, fiscal year 2017-2018 fee schedule, fiscal year 2017-2018 strategic plan, fiscal year 2018 to 2022 capital and technology improvement plan, capital project ordinance 2018-1 through 2018-12, and capital project ordinance amendments to 2018-1 through 2018-12.
Great, detailed motion by Councilmember Chris, seconded by the infamous Councilmember Larry Wright. Any discussion on the motion?
I'd like me now, mayor.
I just want to say.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. If I recall, the discussion last week was, there was language that was talked about in regard to the stormwater fund, you know, usage of that money in FY eighteen, the use of private contractors to help us get stormwater projects moving so that we're not sitting on money. Is that, is that part of the, is that part of any of the language presented tonight?
I can certainly incorporate that in there as well as the proposal that we visit Concord and look at their trash removal as a part of that motion.
Yes, sir, if you could do that, I'll be happy to vote for it.
Yes, and I'll second.
Friendly amendment. I'll second that amendment. During the discussion, I just want to say to you, Doug, this has been a grueling process. I know it wasn't easy dealing with us, but appreciate you and the staff. Y'all worked very diligently to get us, get us a budget that we could all agree on. So, council, no further delay, I guess, ask for your vote. Council, no further delay, I guess we'll ask for your vote.
Green. Green.
Green! Got a unanimous budget, second year in a row. All right. Well, council, this is the last meeting for the.
Oh, item.
Oh, see how anxious I am to get out of here? Mr. Van Gaal, how did I forget about you?
Well, I'll try to keep it as brief as possible, and I'm assuming that nobody signed up for the public hearing, which we did advertise, but thank you again for.
Thank you.
For adding this public hearing to your agenda, and I.
We need to open and close that, Madam Clerk.
Yes, please.
Would you like, I can give it to you first, or?
Yeah, he presents first, yes, sir.
I am still learning your procedures, and I apologize, that's with me, but I want you to know this was properly advertised, as required by the North Carolina general statutes. As you're aware from your past briefings, we are being considered for a potential project by the company E. Clerks, and if we are selected for this, the proposed project would create 130 new jobs with an average salary of $33,500 a year, and the company would hope to fill 100% of those jobs locally, if possible. We're respectfully requesting that you consider approving them for a $37,500 incentive grant to be tied to job creation. As part of the incentive agreement, the company would have to demonstrate performance prior to receiving any funds. Cumberland County approved a similar grant earlier this month. This would greatly improve our competitiveness for the project. Separately, they are talking with both the state and the community college system, who are considering this matter for potential support. Once they receive all the information on local and state incentives, they'll make their decision on where to locate the project, and I think with your support, with the county's support, with the support of the state, we're all hopeful that they will pick Fayetteville as a location for this project. I'm happy to answer questions you have before or after the public hearing, and thank you again, and I do apologize for this not getting on the agenda, but hopefully I'll recall the previous briefings on this project.
Thank you, sir.
Motion, oh.
We'll open and close the public hearing.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, are there any speakers up?
Mayor Protem, we have no speakers for this item.
That being said, we'll open and close the public hearing. Council, look to you for action or questions.
Motion to.
Councilwoman Jensen.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the incentive grant for. They just hit.
Councilmen and women.
Thirty-seven thousand five hundred for E. Clerks.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Jensen, is there?
Second.
Second by Councilmember McDougal, who's quick on the draw tonight. Any discussion on the motion, council? If none, we ask for your vote.
Green, green, green.
That is unanimous, and with that, we will see you all in August.
Motion to adjourn.